So I'd like to open the Town of Fairfax Town Council Special Meeting. It's Wednesday, May 29th, 2024, and at 6:34 PM, we are at the Fairfax Women's Club, 46 Park Road, Fairfax, California. And I'm going to ask folks if you feel comfortable doing so, join me in the Pledge of Allegion.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God into this full liberty and justice for all.
And Madam Clerk, could we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Present.
Councilmember Hellman.
Here.
Councilmember Cutrone.
Present.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Here.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. And could I get a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, so that was Councilmember Cutrone, Vice Mayor Blash, and could I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrone.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. And I'll go ahead and read the land acknowledgement. The Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Mewoc people of present day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging. I'll now go ahead and read the meeting protocol. The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Please turn off all cellular phones or place them in silent mode. The town council will review the agenda at 10 o'clock PM to ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjourned or regular meeting, council meeting. And we had three items on closed session. There was a conference on labor negotiations regarding the public employee performance evaluation. I'd like to read something out of the Brown Act. The Brown Act government, and this is to correct misinformation that's out there. The Brown Act Government Code, Section 54957B4 says, in quotes, "For purposes of this subdivision, the term 'employee' shall include an officer or an independent contractor who functions as an officer or employee, but shall not include any elected official, member of a legislative body, or other independent contractors," end quote. The town attorney position is an officer of the town and/or a town official. And then regarding item three, which is regarding real property negotiations, it was the consensus of the council not to pursue this matter further at this time. And so with that, I'll move on to the regular agenda, but before I do so, no, you already had time to make public comment before the closed session. I'd like to read a speech before we enter into public comments after the first item. Before we begin public comment tonight, I would just like to say that I would appreciate it if speakers would refrain from using profanity and are disparaging people based upon race, religion, orientation, or country of origin. While I am aware that our ability to silence these types of comments is constrained by the Brown Act and the First Amendment, I am asking everyone to please be civil and refrain from such disparagement in your comments. What I can do, however, is disconnect anyone's whose comments disrupt the orderly conduct of our meeting and/or absent appropriate findings are not under the council's subject matter jurisdiction or are not germane to the topic or matter being discussed. Should I determine an individual's comments are not within the council's subject matter jurisdiction or are disruptive to the orderly conduct of the meeting, I will be disconnecting that individual from making further comments. As well, should we have any disturbances in the room that are disruptive to the orderly conduct of the meeting, I will not hesitate to take a break and clear the room. I will ask everyone in the room and on Zoom to remember what I just said before I take public comments on agenda items or moving on to the consent calendar. Thank you. And so now we will move on to item one, which is a long title, which is Adopt Resolutions Calling for a General Municipal Election to Be Held on November 5th, 2024, for the election of certain officers, requesting the Marin County Board of Supervisors to consolidate with any other election conducted on that date, and requesting election services of the county elections department, and adopting regulations for candidate statements, adopt a resolution submitting to the qualified voters of the Town of Fairfax on November 5th, 2024, general municipal election ballot, and initiative amending the Town Code regarding just cause eviction and rent stabilization standards in the Town of Fairfax. And I'm assuming that there may be a presentation or discussion?
Yes, thank you.
Which one?
Presentation.
Are we having a presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have that cue?
Yes.
Town Attorney Colson, will you be doing that presentation?
I will be.
Great, thank you. And I will ask our town clerk subsequent to the meeting if you could post this on the agenda. Thank you very much. All right. With that, take it away.
Okay, thank you. Can everybody hear me okay?
Just a reminder, you've got to be really close to that mic.
I'm on this microphone, I am.
You just bite that microphone.
Okay, this item contains some of our normal election resolutions. And the first one is a resolution calling for the election. There were three seats, council seats, up this November, at the November 5th, 2024 election. And so the first resolution under this item is just a resolution calling the election. It is a standard, our standard resolution that we have announcing that we have three seats available, three seats open. The second resolution is another standard elections resolution about candidate statements, general rules about candidate statements. There's nothing new or novel there. And the third resolution is requesting a consolidation from Marin County of this general election on November 5th. Marin County is, we're requesting that they consolidate the election and do all things necessary to basically hold the election. That's also not, not new. So those are the first three resolutions. I would like to see those resolutions adopted with individual votes. And then we have the fourth resolution, which is the initiative measure. And I thought, the council has previously voted to put this on, the November 5th, 2024 election, and I thought that I would go over a little bit about the initiatives and also try to clear up some of the confusion that happens. You can proceed to the next one. Because in the California Constitution, powers reserved to the people include three: referendum, recall.
Janet, speak into the mic.
And initiative. And that's where those provisions are found in the California Constitution. Can you go to the next slide, please? Referendum. And as you can see, this is to approve or reject statutes or parts of statutes. There are exceptions. And this is, of course, as all three of these are, to be exercised by the electors under procedures outlined by the legislature, authorized by the legislature, in the Elections Code, California Elections Code. And you see the sections there where referendum is. In my time as town attorney here, I've seen one successful referendum. Council passed an ordinance, and there were citizens who did not like that ordinance, did not want it to become effective. So within the 30-day period after the second reading or the adoption of that ordinance, they were able to do a successful referendum. Now, even though these powers are reserved to the people and they have to follow the procedures in the Elections Code, the Elections Code is not necessarily a model of clarity, and this is not an easy thing to do. Maybe that's why in the last 11 years, I've only seen one be successful. It wasn't perfect. It did end up in court, but it did ultimately prevail on substantial compliance. And that one was won by Frank Egger. And so he is someone who does understand the procedures for referendum and knows how to hold a successful one. If we go to the second power, it's recall. And recall is the power of the electors to remove officials. In this case, for the town, it would be town council members. It's also, though, for other elected positions. It could be clerk and treasurer, because those are both elected. Again, you have the procedures outlined in the Elections Code, and these procedures, again, are not all that easy to understand, admittedly. And so the Secretary of State, California Secretary of State, has put together a booklet on guidelines on recall. And these are the sources that we always send people to whenever they are trying to bring forward a recall. The clerk and the attorney are both bound to accept documentation that follows or complies with the law. And we are not permitted to assist, help, advise people trying to do this. Even though it is admittedly difficult to do, there are sources, other sources, and we send people to those sources. People are always welcome to go hire an attorney who knows how to do it, to go hire other people who know how to do it, not necessarily attorneys, to consult others in the community. And if you go to the next one, it's initiative. An initiative, again, a different section of the Elections Code, but also full of procedures. These are for things that people wish to bring forward, their own laws, basically, their own ordinances, if you're talking about the town. This is probably one of the most complicated, I think it's the most complicated of the three. And this resolution before you tonight is an example, and the only one I've seen in my time here, of a successful initiative. Outside sources were consulted. This was brought in, and it was perfect. It had absolutely no errors in it. And so it was able to be accepted, and it is for rent stabilization and just cause eviction. And if you look at this initiative resolution, putting this on the ballot Tuesday, November 5th, I would like to add one section, make, I think, one modification, and that's to the ballot question.
Can you direct us to where that is in the packet?
That's in Section 3.
It's page two.
Page 2, Section 3, it's the box in the center. There are some words that do need to be in here per statute. There is a word limit on it. And it says, "Shall a measure be adopted to amend the Fairfax Town Code to repeal the town's current just cause eviction ordinance and rent stabilization ordinance and replace them with just cause eviction and rent stabilization standards in the California Tenant Protection Act of 2019 and prior Town Code requiring mandatory mediation for rent increases over 5% in a one-year period?" So that's what I would like to add to the end of that.
Could you repeat that?
Sure.
So after it says prior Town Code.
Prior Town Code.
You would add requiring?
Requiring mandatory mediation for rent increases over 5% in a one-year period.
Please stop speaking. So requiring mandatory for rent increases over?
Over 5% in a one-year. Rent increases over 5% in a one-year period.
Okay, thanks. And that's kind of what I was asking for last night.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And so we also, let me direct your attention to Section 5, Arguments Impartial Analysis. As the town attorney, I will be doing an impartial analysis.
Can you tell us where, I'm not really sure.
Section 5 is page 3.
Okay.
Down near the bottom.
Okay, thank you.
So as the town attorney, I will be doing an impartial analysis on this measure, and that will be included in the voter pamphlet. We did not have the entire text of the initiative printed in the voter information guide because it is many pages long, and that would be very, very expensive. But as always, a copy is available free of charge by contacting the clerk. I want to point out the Arguments section, which is Section 5. I'm assuming the proponents of this measure will be drafting and submitting an argument for it.
So Section 5, where?
Page 3, Arguments and Impartial Analysis.
Oh, and number A. Thank you, Stephanie.
So I'm assuming that the proponents of the measure will be drafting an argument in favor, and they will be submitting that. This gives the dates by which they need to do that. And then Argument Against, those arguments are also submitted to the clerk. The clerk will select, in the prioritization contained in the Elections Code, Section 9287, an argument against. And then for the rebuttals, which is the next section down, Section 6, the names, so the arguments will be switched. So the Argument 4 will be given to the people writing Against, and the Argument Against will be given to the people writing Argument 4. And rebuttals will be drafted, they will be turned in, and there are the deadlines for that.
Janet, could you elaborate on the process for what party develops the argument against?
Well, arguments are accepted by the clerk. And so the clerk will select, and the prioritization listed in the Elections Code, Section 9287, puts the council first, but I'm assuming that this will be actually members of the public. It says, "Any individual voter eligible to vote, a bona fide association of citizens, or any combination of a bona fide association and citizens."
But what is the process? I hear you saying that the clerk accepts them, but what if three different parties submit?
The clerk will, will select. It is the clerk's decision to select one of those based upon the prioritization listed in the Elections Code. So first is the legislative body or members of the legislative body who've been previously authorized by the body. Second is an individual voter or bona fide association of citizens.
Can I just interrupt you? It says, "Second is proponents of the..."
Well, that's not listed in order. This is from the Elections Code. This is just listing them in whole, not in order. So the second is the individual voter or bona fide association of citizens, or combination of voters and associations, who are the bona fide sponsors or proponents of the measure. So that's where I think we'll get the Argument 4. C, bona fide association of citizens. And D, individual voters who are eligible to vote on the measure. So that's the priority. I'm imagining B will be the proponents of the measure, and the argument against will probably fall under C, a bona fide association of citizens. But it could be D, could be individual voters, if there are no associations.
The sequence is body, which is the council.
Council.
And so how is it determined? I'm just trying to understand process.
Sure.
So how does this body determine whether that's something this body wants to do or not?
That's something that you would have to discuss, and you could.
But it's not agendized tonight.
...requirement which you're describing. We aren't deciding tonight. Nobody's deciding.
Right, but I'm just trying to set expectations for everybody, including the dais, as far as if August is the deadline, then that needs to happen, yea or nay, whether this body wants to do that or not, in June or July, correct?
At the latest, I would think that you could discuss that tonight. It's right under here. In the end of it, it says, "Town Council authorizes the town council, or any member of the town council, proponents of the above measure, any individual voter eligible to vote on the above measure, a bona fide association of such citizens, or any combination of voters and associations, to file written arguments in favor of or against the measure." The prioritization is listed in the--
It would be more efficient to do that this evening, rather than agendizing that decision.
You could. It is part of this resolution.
Okay.
You will see when we come to the clerk, that we're also going to add that into the clerk section.
Okay, so let's move on with this. Let's not go to the next item.
Okay. So I'm, anyway, this leads out the arguments for, and how rebuttals are done, the time limit on it, asking the county to place it on the ballot, et cetera. That's the fourth resolution. Exhibit A to that is the ordinance, and you see the initiative measure, where it repeals 5.54 and 5.55, and replaces both of those with other text, shortly, but other text. And so these are the four resolutions before you. Three of them are standard, calling the election, candidate statements, consolidating the election. The fourth one is the initiative. That was previously brought to you, and you have voted to put it on November 5th. This is the actual implementation of that.
Okay, so just a quick question. Yes, so it says, you know, "The full text of the measure shall not be printed on the voter information guide." So somebody in what the clerk's office will be responsible for sending a copy to anyone who requests?
Correct.
How does that work?
The clerk will be.
Right.
And that will start at Exhibit A. That is what will be handed out to people free of charge if they request it.
Okay, and that is the original ordinances, not the ones that were revised in June of--
Correct.
Right.
It is the initiative measure.
Right.
Which was against the original ordinances, yes.
And is there any problem that those two don't match up?
No, because it will wipe out 5.54 and 5.55, and replace it with other language. And that will be 5.4 and 5.5, and it doesn't matter what's there now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do you have more?
No, I don't.
Okay, so I'm guessing, are there any questions of staff? I think some are already asked. I see none. Before we start public comment, I want to remind folks that the decision's already been made to place the ballot initiative on the ballot for November 5th. So that's not the question here tonight. It's basically approving resolutions, consolidating the elections, and moving forward unless the council decides to appoint a subcommittee or council members to write a ballot argument in for or against, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so just want to remind folks, we're not reopening the whole discussion of just cause rent stabilization. We're really just calling for the election. So with that, let's get started, and we have a lot to get to tonight, so we're going with two minutes. Thank you. Clerk, Madam Clerk, could you set the timer? Okay, you're on it. Thank you. First speaker, anybody want to speak?
Hi, Todd Greenberg, Downtown Fairfax. Regarding regular agenda item number one, we've had no open time for public expression, first off, as a matter of protocol.
It's, this is a special meeting. We don't have open time during special meetings.
Okay, I'll continue. Thank you for that information. First off, it shouldn't be by request. Somebody should not have to make a trip down to Town Hall to find a clerk that doesn't answer their emails. We'll go into that later. This should be posted now on the town's website, publicly available for all, to pick up at their convenience, and they should be able to come down with a preprinted copy available now, so that they have time to study this long thing. Additionally, regarding the town attorney here, who just had an employee review, before the closed session that started at 4:30--
Hey, that's not on this agenda item, so--
Well, this is related to the agenda item, actually, if you'd please not interrupt me, because she talked about being impartial, and I want to say something that makes it clear, based upon what was said at the beginning of the meeting. I'd like my time back. May I continue? Before the meeting, it was said that she is an officer, or considered an officer of this town. If she is an officer of the town, and that's what allows her to have a public employee review, how does that compare with her and the town mayor saying that she works for the town council only, and not the people of Fairfax? There's no way that she can be impartial if she's working for this town council that has stridently worked against the people of Fairfax, if her employment, her contracted employment, depends upon it. She is not acting impartially.
Thank you, Todd. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Town Council, Michael McIntosh. Todd is absolutely correct. If she wants to declare that she is an officer or representative of the town, then she must be impartial. I'm here to contest and legally challenge her assumption that she can change the language on the initiative that we presented. The initiative presented, the reason it's so important to be finite and review the language, is because it's a set document. She does not have any legal authority or right to say, oh, we're going to add, and she said from your comments, so again, you're out of line, that you're going to add some negotiation over 5%. That was not in our initiative, and that is not in our language, and there's no legal precedence or ability for the town attorney to represent that she can change that. I also want to bring in and contest your ability for this standard little sequence. So by what you said, someone who's supportive or opponent to this initiative could come in and make an argument on both sides to their best ability, and if this town council, which is very biased, directs the deputy town clerk, not our clerk, and listening to the attorney, you guys could say, hey, let's go ahead and give this both to DSA, and they'll make an argument on both sides. I challenge anybody on this dais, if they've been in a Marin County Court, excuse me, the Marin County Election Guide, given an argument for or against. I have, and I can tell you, this is biased, and it's incorrect, and it will be challenged. And you think of 20 years, very seldom do I come up here and say you'll be challenged. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Next speaker, please.
May I respond to that?
Let's wait till the end.
Okay.
Sierra?
Sierra Salin, I pretty much agree with almost everything Michael said. Whatever the percentage is that rent can be raised, I think it's going to be more upon whatever the state regulations are currently, and not whatever the town wants to put in there. I mean, I don't think rent should go up a whole bunch in general, but as far as landlord goes, if you look at the cost of everything, materials, labor, and everything going into being a landlord, including taxes, insurance, things are going up, and they've gone up considerably. And if somebody needs to raise their rent to cover that--
Sarah, this is not the topic. We're calling for the election. If you want--
Calling for the election, but when it stated that it's going to be limited to 5% raise, which wasn't in the initiative or in what was being put on the ballot, or what's being asked for, that's a change.
It's actually in the initiative, but thank you. Okay, next speaker, please, Rick Hamer. Oh, I'm sorry, Rick Hamer. I didn't see with my glasses.
Oh, hi, Mayor. Thank you for the moment of uncertainty. These ballot initiatives are very carefully proposed, and they're very calculated. And if they want to have it formatted a certain way, they calculated that. They want it that way. They don't want any language added for clarity. I mean, I, my opinion of clarity is going to be different than the next person, but that's not what is here. It is really what they wanted. They are the people. They are speaking. They decided on this, and it's very calculated. So please keep it the way that it was requested by the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I guess Mark Bell, Fairfax, I guess, a point of order. There was a lady here several meetings ago, and she wanted, she had some questions during an item, and she was told that you're, she said, can't you just answer them now? And the attorney said, well, it's against the law for us to respond to each individual speaker. So I'm really confused as to why she wanted to comment after one of our earlier speakers to clarify something when I thought it was, would be against the law for that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers in the room? Philip? Oh, Stephen Keys. Just, just go ahead. We don't need to argue over this. It's simple.
Hi, Philip Solivary, Fairfax. I came here with a prepared speech, essentially to praise the people of Fairfax, the hard work they did, the money they raised, to put this initiative on the ballot, and also to point out that members on the dais right now failed the town when they brought rent control before the town and voted on it, on just five people enacting it. That's what I had planned to say. But now, what I'm hearing is that you all up there, along with the attorney and the rest of the staff, seem determined to drag this thing out and make it as painful as possible for the, for the residents that voted for you all. And I find that absolutely appalling. I think if you had any, any guts at all, you, you would, you would consider resigning and let new people take your positions--
Philip, that's off topic.
Okay, thank you. I've just got it, I just got it out, so that's all I really need to say.
Okay, thank you very much. Stop with the clapping, or I will clear the room. Okay, Stephen Keys.
Stephen Keys from Cascade Canyon. Pam Meggs asked me to come down here. She's in a different, she's got another meeting going on. We'll try to get here in a little bit. But she said for me to convey that she is supporting whatever Frank Edgar says, wholeheartedly. And I expected that he would have talked, and I could just say, she votes for that. And I'll add my endorsement also. I'm not sure what Frank will say, but I'd like--
Okay, thank you, Stephen. PJ, did you want to speak on this matter?
Yeah, real quick, knowing that the actual merits are not on the agenda tonight, I just want to confirm what the content, what the scope of the content for the impartial statement is, and if it includes an analysis of the consequences for the town from HCD to the extent that they determine that a repeal of the programs included in the approved housing element is a materially adverse reduction in our policies, if that automatically could trigger state control over our planning and approving process, anything else that would be involved, and also would like to know at what point the town incurs the cost of including these on the ballot, to the extent that there are legal challenges that enjoin this actually being placed on November's ballot. Thanks.
Thank you. Frank, did you want to speak on this matter?
Thank you, Mayor. Frank Edgar from the Cascades. This is just item number one, correct? This is not item--
That's correct.
Okay. The, the initiative that was presented should be what shows up on the ballot. I don't, I don't think you have the authority to amend the initiative itself. Was I hearing that correctly?
No.
I believe we do have the authority, but go ahead.
Okay. I just, I'm just asking that question.
Okay, but you, you want the full initiative. Thank you.
The full initiative should be on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Frank, would you mind turning the button off, or Michael? Thank you. Bringing it back to the council, before we do that--
Do you want to go on Zoom?
Oh, I'm sorry. I totally forgot about Zoom. Thank you. I'm, I'm losing it on fourth meeting of the month.
We have one speaker on Zoom. It's Deb Benson. Deb, you are unmuted.
Okay, Deb.
Thank you. Thank you, council members for hearing me. I want to speak to Resolution Number 24, Attachment B, regarding the statements of candidates in elections, of what they're allowed to say and what they're not allowed to say in their, in their ballot language. You know, brief description, name, age, brief description, occupation. They're allowed no membership activity in partisan organizations, affiliations, limited to recitation of the candidate's own personal background and qualifications. So I ran for council in 2017, and my ballot language included part of my platform. And at that time, our town clerk was allowed to sit with members of the public and help them along in what the rules were and what the rules were not. And she let me know that Linda Roberts had let her know that we were not allowed to, to mention anything about what we were for or what we weren't for. So this led to an attorney being involved, and it led to Linda Roberts calling me and apologizing for imposing that limitation on my free speech. The attorney said if Abe Lincoln had been limited to saying he was an attorney, he would never have won an election. So this seems to be very restrictive, and seems to be aimed at, at protecting seats and disallowing the public free speech. And it's already been through the wringer once, and I hope you don't have to come up against it again. So already, I received an apology from Linda Roberts, saying your speech should not be limited. Rewrite your ballot statement if you want to. So that's what I have to say about that, and I support everything Frank said. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. So no more speakers?
We have one more speaker on Zoom.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, you are unmuted.
Yeah, hello, this is Michael Saxon, Director of the Marin Residents. Again, just to apologize if you're kind of late. My understanding is that you're speaking as to the rent control initiative going on the ballot. My understanding is that this is pretty much just a pro forma acceptance of the ballot, ballot initiative as is, and that there shouldn't be any discussion about changing the initiative. I would suggest that that would not be the case, that you shouldn't change or attempt to change the ballot initiative. Definitely bring on legal action. So I, my vote is to, my suggestion, strong suggestion is just to put the ballot measure on the as-is. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else?
There are no more speakers on Zoom.
Okay, so bringing it back, what did you want to comment on?
Okay, I want to comment on some of the misunderstanding. We're not talking about changing anything connected with the initiative measure. If you look at the attachments to this resolution, you'll see Attachment A is the initiative measure, the full initiative measure, with all of the strikeout of 5.54 and 5.55, as currently exist in the town code, and the additional language that is in the--
I don't know why you keep referring to Attachment A. What I see is the initiative under attached to Attachment D. So the full initiative--
Look at--
Is Exhibit A.
Exhibit A.
But it's Attachment D, just for people in the public.
Okay, Exhibit A, yes.
Of Attachment D.
It is the initiative measure in whole, unaltered. Nothing has changed about that. That is what the initiative is. Okay, having said that, what I'm talking about modifying is something that is not drafted by the initiative proponents. It's drafted by the town, and it's the ballot question. That's different from the initiative measure. There are certain language under the elections code that needs to be in a ballot question. It is limited to 75 words. Shall a measure be adopted to amend the Fairfax Town Code to repeal the town's current just cause eviction ordinance and rent stabilization ordinance, and replace them with just cause eviction and rent stabilization standards in the California Tenant Protection Act of 2019 and prior town code? And the addition I ask was to explain the prior town code provision being 5.55 that used to contain--
Oh, I think you just say what it is. It's requiring mandatory mediation for rent increases over 5% over a one-year period.
Yes.
And that is Chapter 5.5, which no longer exists.
Well, it doesn't. But if you look at the initiative measure, you will see that they are replacing, they're taking 5.55 out right now, which is rent stabilization, and putting it back to what it was, almost verbatim, prior to that. It was still 5.55. But if you look at the text of the initiative measure, that's what's going back in.
Correct.
Is the mandatory mediation over 5%, yes, or increases over 5%.
Okay, I want to go back to what you first said, which is, you're not amending anything that was submitted. The ballot question is drafted by the town--
Correct.
Per what? Per what code?
Per the law, per the elections code.
The local code?
No.
Or the county?
State.
Or the state? Okay, so the ballot question--
Yes.
Is developed by the town per California elections code.
Yes.
Okay. And then the 75-word limit is also--
In the elections code.
The California--
Yes.
Elections code.
Yes.
So just to be clear, and please capture for the record, we are not amending, you're proposing in here, this ballot question is not amending anything in the initiative itself.
Correct.
Thank you. Please capture that for the minutes. Clerk, please. Please. The clerk nodded yes.
Okay, so I just want to, so there is something that people are focusing on, and it's not, I mean, somebody focused on the ballot question, which is required that we do, and I had asked for that change because it wasn't clear--
Right.
--what the initiative was doing. But the ballot question is a separate issue. What you mentioned was, rather than printing the whole initiative, which would cost us a lot of money--
In the voter information--
In the voter information booklet, you would, we would do an impartial analysis, which is also required by the elections code. I would just say this. Why, I would rather that we just go ahead and pay whatever it costs to put the whole initiative in there along with the impartial analysis. I don't think it's worth causing more rancor over this issue. And I realize it's going to be expensive, and it will cost more for the election. I also think to people that are the proponents of the initiative, you know, when you get your, your big book from the state, and you see these very long things, about two people read them. I'm one of them. So, and it may be very confusing, but I would rather that we go ahead, just pay whatever it costs, put it in there. Let's not incur more rancor over something. Let's just get it in there. Let's do our ballot question. Let's do our impartial analysis, which we have to do as well, and let's move on. And just, all right, thank you. And I don't need that, but I appreciate it. So let's--
May I, may I just point out, the initiative runs from page six to page 31.
Correct.
It's going to be printed in eight, probably eight-point type.
Correct.
It's going to be very small, very tiny, very difficult to read. It will cost thousands of dollars.
I think it's fine. Let's, I mean, you know, whether, whether I agree or not with the ballot initiative is not the question. It's, you know, these folks, as you said, paid money, did a perfect initiative. Let's leave it as-is, and still you will do your impartial analysis. Now, I think Vice Mayor Blash had her finger up, and I said, let me speak first. So go ahead.
Okay. I think the other thing that I understand about the 5% is that's the county's program. I mean, that's how they implement--
No, it was our program.
No, no, but we went with the county as the people who would hear it, from my understanding. So that was just, you already answered the one question I had about the 5%. I would love to know, you know, since we seem to have such a budget-focused community, you know, what the actual budget for printing, you know, 30-some-odd pages or 28 pages or whatever it is, would be, just out of curiosity. I'm not against putting it in there. I just, I'm curious how much it might cost. You know, we've debated, like, small amounts of money, and whether or not they were worthwhile. This one is probably worthwhile, but I think it would be helpful for other people in the community who are not necessarily the people in this room to understand how much it's going to cost us. Okay, and then--
Do we have, yeah, before we do that, do we know, Christine?
Not off the top of my head. I have to look it up.
Do we have an estimate? Okay, well, all right, we don't have the answer to that. Okay, go ahead, Vice Mayor Blash.
Okay. And I did just want to ask about the question. So, you know, I was going to say, I think it would be great to put it on the website if we're not going to put it in the booklet. But if we're going to put it in the booklet, then, you know, that takes care of that. But it would be good to know how much it's going to cost, at least some point. Even if we just vote on it tonight, it would still be good for the public to know how much this is costing. Candidate statements. My understanding, that's pretty standard language. Is there some law that rules that, or--
No, it's, it's a standard resolution taken from, you know, the wording of the California elections code.
Okay, so that, because that was my understanding. I don't think it's something that we made up. It's not unusual. The other thing, let's see, I think I'm going to let it go for, well, and I did also want to note just that, I think all of us have at different times supported rent control, rent stabilization, but I keep hearing statements that the five of you voted on rent control. I wasn't actually on the council when it was initially adopted, but I have supported it. So I just want to keep that clear, that I feel like there's some just, you know, interesting misperceptions going on. Fine, you know, I'm just going to clarify that. I did want to ask about the impartial analysis as well. You know, people feel somehow concerned that the analysis will not be impartial. How do we guarantee that it is impartial?
Well, people can challenge it if they don't think it's impartial. But that is, simply put, it's supposed to inform the voters as to what the initiative says, what it does, and what will happen if it is approved, if it is passed. It is not an advocacy piece. It is a, just a recitation of the facts.
Thank you. And I'm not saying that I would not have voted for it or voted for it. I am simply saying that that is a statement of fact. So thank you.
Okay, I think Councilmember Cottano had a finger up, and then we'll go to this side.
Sure. Yeah, I feel like, for some reason, this has taken probably way longer than it ought to have taken. But I just wanted to reiterate that I'm curious, just because we do hear a lot of questions about cost. And I'm supportive of the whole thing being in the booklet. I think that's fine. But it'd be good to know if we're talking, like, thousands of dollars, or tens of thousands of dollars, in order to have that much paper being printed for every house at eight-point font. But it's just more of a curiosity, just because elections do cost a lot of money. It's good for the public to know that elections cost a lot of money. But generally, I'm supportive of everything, and I, I don't know if I care too much about the additional ballot language that was proposed, or the, the information that was in that box. I don't have an opinion one way or the other, but if the proponents of the initiative didn't want that language in there, I would say they should go forward without that language in there. But anyway, yeah, thanks.
And just to clarify-- And just to clarify, I remember Michael Sexton at one of the meetings, there are two things, and the ballot question, as it was written, just said going back to the state law. But I remember I had to point out that they also wanted the mandatory mediation to replace the rent stabilization. So to me, making the ballot question clear should be clear to the voters what they're voting for. It's not just going back to the state law. So that's why I asked for it last night. But moving on, I think we had Councilmember Ackerman next.
Yeah, I'm also surprised that this is not a routine action. But, yeah, I think I, I agree with what Councilmember Cutrano said about, it would be, I would like to hear some kind of a ballpark figure of what it would cost to print this thing. And I, I would think having it on a website that was accessible, it could certainly be the town's website, and in its entirety, and what I'm talking about is Appendix A to, or Exhibit A to, to Appendix D of our packet, but the actual ballot measure in its entirety. Most of that ballot measure is strikeout. It's Sections 5.0. The, the, the two, two sections of town code with lines through them, making them difficult to read, but the idea is they all go away. It's, if the idea, which I think is the idea, is to make it clear to voters what their choice is, that's what, that's what we should focus on. And deluding them with pages and pages and pages of strikeout, I don't know whether that makes it clear. That, as I recall the ballot measure, it says it'll repeal all this, and there's pages and pages of strikeout, and it'll repeal all this, and there's more pages and pages of strikeout, and it'll replace it with this. And it's about two pages, I think. That's not, it's underlined because that's the convention in here. It seems like that's the important part. And the strikeout could be replaced with the section, with just a reference to section, the sections of the current code that are being removed. And then, of course, state clearly everywhere that you can find the entire thing if you want on the website. It just seems nonsensical, but if, you know, I, I agree that I don't want to fight, fight about it with the proponents of the measure. They've got the signatures, and if, if they think that's clear for citizens, to deluge them with paper so that I, in my opinion, they wouldn't actually benefit from it, I'm not opposed to it. But I would like to know approximately what, what it would cost, what order of magnitude it would cost the town to do that.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember-
We have to decide that tonight.
Yeah, we do. Okay, I would just ask that, folks, if you want to talk, please leave the room, it's hard enough to get through all this. Councilmember Hellman, please speak.
Yeah, I have a correction to Attachment D. It says city council in one of the, on page one, instead of town council. In the third-to-last whereas statement.
Okay, that'll be corrected.
And then, I'm, I'm still kind of stuck on process. Are we, and I, and I don't totally understand, sorry, let me go back to my notes, what you advised related to who's drafting the argument against. So, you said the body, voters or associations, is that what you said?
Yes.
And then there was some other association that-
Well, it's, it's either individuals, groups of individuals, or some combination of individuals and groups of individuals. And so, all may write and file an argument, in this case, against, and submit those to the clerk, file them with the clerk. The clerk will then select one of those to be an argument against, and it will be based upon the prioritization found in the California Elections Code. And so, here's a copy of-
And can the voters be an individual or, like you said, group of voters? And if it's a group of voters, do you list the names? Like, what are, I'm, I'm trying to understand.
I think that's the case, that's just a lower priority, if my, if my understanding's correct, is it, you know, the council is the, the first priority-
Yes.
And then, from there, it follows, you know, bona fide association of citizens, you know, and then all the way down to the lowest priority, which is just individual voters.
Okay, so like a, like a political organization, let's say the NRA wanted to submit, is that?
That would be C. That would be C. 9287 of the California Elections Code, Section C, bona fide association of citizens.
So they don't necessarily have to be voters in Fairfax? Is that correct? Could it be a, a group of people that were outside Fairfax that wanted to submit an argument against?
Says bona fide association of citizens. The only thing about-
Well, citizens usually means voters, so what-
I understand. So D is individual voters who are eligible to vote on the measure.
So that, I go back to my question, because that wasn't clear to me.
Okay, so first priority is the body of the council?
Yes.
Second priority is association?
Basically, the proponents of the measure would be the second section. The individual voter or bona fide association of citizens or combination of voters and associations, who are the bona fide sponsors or proponents of the measure?
So, okay.
And then C is-
When you say, when you say sponsors, you mean against. In this case, we're talking about against, that's what I'm trying to know.
Well, it would be four. It'd be four.
So the, the proponents of the ballot initiative would most likely be the, that body that is writing the arguments for?
Yes.
I'm, but I'm, but I think it's, we know who that is, I'm trying to understand.
Okay, so then, then you go down the list.
Then C, a bona fide association of citizens. If a group of citizens has formed against the measure, then they would be the ones writing against, as opposed to, they would have a higher priority than an individual who wanted to write an argument against.
But they're lower priority in the election code than the sponsors, because the sponsors presumably should have, yeah, exactly.
Correct.
So.
So it sounds like to me that if there was a group of people that are not voters in Fairfax, so assuming somebody wants to write an argument against, these people do not live in Fairfax, they are not registered voters, they do not, they would not be able to write an argument against, is that correct? Based on what you read, no.
Individuals.
No, but individuals or a group. When you say a group of citizens, those need to be registered voters in Fairfax.
It doesn't say that.
Okay, so it could be any citizen.
Group of citizens, a bona fide association of citizens.
Okay, so why don't we kind of move on from this? Is, I would just ask my fellow council members, I'm assuming, I know the proponents will be writing an argument for-
Right.
Does, is anyone on the council interested in writing an argument against? And if you are, this is a time to speak up, and we would make that decision.
Yes.
And if you're not, then whoever wants to write the argument against has to meet that list.
Has to, has to write an argument and file it with the clerk.
And the clerk has to accept it based on if it meets the Elections Code?
Correct.
Okay. So, I don't see anyone on the council interested in writing an argument against, is that correct?
I mean, I would.
You, you would like to do that?
Sure.
Okay, so-
Do you want to do a subcommittee on it? Is that-
It's not a subcommittee, it's just the decision-
Two members, no more than two members.
So if you all, it's not a subcommittee of the council, once this becomes, so basically, if you both want to write the argument against, then we could take that vote tonight.
But if it's representing the body, it doesn't represent the body.
It's not representing the body, you are just, I'm not, I'm not supportive.
The legislative body or member or members of the legislative body authorized by that body. The council would have to authorize you to write the argument against.
But if, is it on behalf of just two council members or on behalf of the body, the legislative body?
The whole body is authorizing you.
That's not my question.
Okay, so the question is, if two of them write it, I'm not supportive of being part of the argument for or against.
Right.
So I'm not authorizing two members to speak on my behalf. And so-
But if, if other, if there were at least three council members that voted in the affirmative, would that then be the, or does it have to be unanimous? How does that work?
No, that's the, the authorization is-
So long as it's the majority of the council, the two people would speak on behalf of the coun, or write the position?
Right.
I see.
Yeah, and I'm just curious about that. I, I don't understand the, why we would go to the council when there seems to be already a group that's supporting it, that's not part of the council? I guess I'm just wondering what the pros and cons are, if somebody could-
Yeah. I, I'm, that's up to you.
I'm, I'm not sure it's a good idea for, to be the council that writes the, the argument in favor of it. I would assume, I don't know who it would be, but I would assume that there will be some group formed to try to preserve rent control. I don't know, but I would assume it would hope it was-
There's already a growing list of-
I would hope it was a group that was just specifically focused on this ballot measure.
So I would just say, to cut this off, but is-
Why are we cutting it off? This is important.
I'm, I'm making the idea that you, we take a vote and see-
We're not done deliberating, though.
Okay.
Are you done? So, there is a growing list of organizations, not including DSA, that are against the measure. So, could a group submit? A group of organizations submit? I just, I want to be able to understand and explain this to anyone who asks me, and it's-
Janet, can I ask a question? As a voter, I've read these things that come in the mail. I suspect most of us do. And they often have texts that has a number of signatures at the bottom, and some of the signatures have affiliations with them, like someone from this group and someone from that group that have written the, the argument pro and con. So I'm not, is that possible? I don't-
If there's one argument against, and it's submitted, and it's got a number of signatures on it, then that is one that the clerk will consider, that one argument against, signed by a number of, of groups or individuals.
So the group could be basically an ad hoc group who got together and agreed to co-write this thing, and they agreed on the wording, and they submitted it. It doesn't have to be a 501(c)(3) or an LSC or any other known existing group.
It doesn't have to be a 501(c)(3), but it says bona fide association of citizens. Yeah.
So it could be like, say Fairfax. Okay.
So, so I'm just, again, going to clarify on this. You know, say there's a bunch of groups, and some of them are in Fairfax and some of them are outside of Fairfax. What, what happens? Like, you know, are the groups that are outside of Fairfax able to sign on to that or say anything, or does it have to be spearheaded by somebody in Fairfax? Like, how does that work?
All I can tell you right now is what the Elections Code says, and then we will see what we, what we receive. It just says bona fide association of citizens. The only time it talks about voters eligible to vote on the measure is individual voters.
Okay, and then if it was something that was taken up by the council, that would be different than if it was something that was submitted by a bona fide association of citizens. So the bona fide association of citizens, you know, I'm assuming you don't need legal counsel to do this, but if they needed legal counsel, they'd have to hire somebody and do whatever the proponents are doing, right?
The council has the first priority. And the council, it says the legislative body or members of the legislative body authorized by the body. And so the council has the first priority. And then, second, you get the sponsors or proponents of the measure. Now clearly, that's going to be the argument for. And then, third, a bona fide association of citizens. And fourth, an individual voter who's eligible to vote on the measure.
So just to also point out, I've run a couple of measures in the town before, and when we wrote ballot arguments, you can ask, so that person writes it or that group writes it, and then we've asked people, like, I think you can have as many as five, and so-
Sign on to it.
If group X decides to submit that ballot argument and certain council members wanted to sign on to it, you, you're free to do that. That's, okay, Michael, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, it's Pierce, that that's not necessarily the case. So, let's, let's do a couple of things. Number one, there was some interest on a couple of members of the council of, of writing a ballot argument against. Is that still on the table? And if so, I think we should do a vote on that before we vote on the resolutions.
So we have three resolutions, and then the fourth one is this initiative resolution. Do you want to do the first three?
Take the first three? Yeah.
Yeah, let's go ahead.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, just for the members of the public following along at home, all of the materials are up on our website and viewable now, so I just wanted to address that.
Thank you. Okay, so the town attorney wanted each of the resolutions, we done separately? Would someone like to do Resolution A?
So I can make a motion to approve the resolution, calling for a general municipal election be held on Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, for the election of certain officers as required by the provisions of the laws of the state of California relating to general law cities and towns?
Would someone like to second? Okay, so that was Councilmember Cutrano. Second, Councilmember Ackerman, would you do a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes.
All eyes.
Okay, Resolution B, would someone like to make a motion for that? And read it out, please.
Yeah, I'm happy to make a motion to pass the resolution adopting regulations for candidates for elective office pertaining to candidate statements submitted to the voters at the general municipal election to be held on November 5th, 2024.
A second.
Okay, so that was Councilmember Cutrano. And second, Vice Mayor Blash, could you do a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes.
All eyes.
Okay, and next, Councilmember Cutrano, do you want to do Item C?
Yeah, sure. I'm happy to make the motion to adopt the resolution requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of Marin to consolidate a general municipal election to be held on November 5th, 2024, with the statewide general election to be held on that date pursuant to Section 10403 of the California Elections Code.
Thank you. And- Second, so that was Councilmember Cutrano. Second, Vice Mayor Blash, could you do a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes.
All eyes.
Okay, so now we get to Item D, and I have two things I think we need to discuss before we make a motion on the resolution. And number one is, I'd like someone to make a motion to, with the entire initiative in the, in the-
The voter guide?
Thank you. Losing my voice, or losing my mind. Okay, if someone would like to make that motion, I would appreciate-
Even if it's $60,000 or, I'm okay with it, it's just, do we want to put a cap on the expense or?
No, I think we just want to go with it.
Okay.
You're going to make that motion?
Sure.
Okay, great.
And you note that it's-
I did note that it's changing the section of the initiative that talks about.
Where are you?
I'm finding it. Hang on. Section seven, this is page four, placement on the ballot. The full text of the measure shall not be printed in the voter information guide. You want to strike the not.
Wait a minute, you are not on the right page. I'm looking at page four.
Of Attachment D.
Right, and where are?
Section seven, placement.
Oh, okay, placement on the ballot.
Yes.
Got it.
So just omit not?
Yes, if you're striking that word not.
Okay.
Okay, so we have, Councilmember Hellman did the motion. Would someone like to second that?
Well, no, we have to, with the, with the edits.
No, we're not taking, we're going to do three votes. One is, are we going to make that change? And then the second piece is if a subcommittee of the council wants.
Three edits to the res.
Yeah, well, I know, right.
So I'll, I think all Councilmember Hellman is saying is she's, would make a motion with the edits.
Okay, all right. Well, but we're not doing, let's, all right. Sorry, I'm losing it.
Okay.
Okay, let's go with, that was a good edit that we just got, and that's on page four. And removing not. Okay.
And the second one is about the ballot question. Do you want to add that language in, what it says right now, and prior town code? Do you want to explain what is meant by prior town code?
That's the recommendation by the mayor that says requiring mandatory.
Page two.
Mediation for rent increases over 5%.
Yeah, I mean, I would like that because I think it, for most folks who are not going to read things, it makes it more simple for them to understand.
Is that, I guess, a question for the town attorney. Is that the only, the only portion that reverts in the town code per the initiative? Or are there a number of other things that revert that would be left out?
It's, it's a generalization, but it is, if you look at what is being proposed to replace the stricken 5.55, it's almost verbatim the original 5.55. In fact, I couldn't find a word different. But there is some additional language that is also added in to what is now going to be a new Section 5.55. It just, when I said in here, when I, when I wrote this to say, and prior town code, I was referring to the prior 5.55. That includes the mandatory mediation provision for rent increases of 5%, of over 5% in a one-year period. But it's a clarification of what has been written, what I wrote right here.
And I just need to add that, you know, I checked it out on the county's website. We bought into county services at 5%. Like, that's the county's program for mandatory mediation, and we were using the county as the people who were doing mandatory mediation. So it's not that shocking. It's what we bought into, basically.
That's what was in our code.
Yeah, I brought that back in 2019, and we met with the DA's office to see if they would do those for us. So, yes.
But I guess that, I'm not totally clear. So, but you're saying, because this is an inclusion of a new statement in the, in the ballot question, but it's a specific, a very specific piece of the old code. So I just want to make, I want to confirm, that's like the most substantive portion that, that we would be reverting to. And there are no other, like, really substantive things that would. I just don't want to arbitrarily pick and choose things in the old code to put into the ballot question.
I thought it might be a little confusing to say, and prior town code, Section 5.55, because that section number has been used now for two different things and would be used for a third different thing. So I just wanted to stay away from those numbers. And, and I think that does, is really the essence of the old 5.55 before the rent stabilization.
Yeah, the essence. Thank you.
So do we have agreement on that?
I'm, I'm fine with leaving it out. Seems, there seems to be public.
Well, I think there's a question that, in the initiative, it lists it specifically. This is the language in the initiative, what the initiative does when the proponents submitted it. So that's why I want to include it, because I think we need to be fair to the voters. A lot of voters won't read anything except the ballot question.
Since we have one of the folks in the audience, could we get a thumbs up that you're okay with us adding this language to the ballot question?
It's not different than.
The ballot question is not the initiative. I, I don't think.
Okay, that's enough. Thank you. All right, whatever you want to do, I don't care at this point.
Decision maker. I presented this, and we can leave it as it is if we think that will help those.
I'm happy to leave it as it is if, if it doesn't ruffle feathers for folks in the audience. I just.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, just be quiet, please. We don't need the peanut gallery. All right, so what are we doing? I'm going to clear the room. If you don't, all right, let's clear the room. Everybody get out unless elder folks, elder folks or people with mobility issues do not need to clear the room. We're taking a five-minute break.
Or the press.
Go ahead and get started. As soon as our technician is back, could everyone take their seats? Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started. We need our clerk back. We need our clerk back. So I have a proposal that we continue this last resolution until next week, June 5th, when we can get firm information on the cost of printing the entire initiative in the ballot, in the, in the voter guide.
Yes.
And so I would like someone to do a motion for that. No, we didn't. We voted on the three other resolutions.
So we're, you're saying continuing this whole item or?
Just Item Four.
Under.
The fourth resolution continuing until next week, June 5th, so we can have complete information on what the cost is to print the entire initiative in the voter guide.
Okay, and the, and the resolution at that point will contain the edits?
Yeah, we'll get the edits in there.
Okay.
All right, so would someone like to make a motion to support the continuance to next week of?
Well, I will move to continue our discussion of the fourth of the four resolutions that we were asked to approve in Item One on tonight's agenda to the June 5th meeting, when we have accurate cost estimates.
I don't need the specifics, but thank you. And would someone like to second that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could you do a roll call vote?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Uh, yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. Okay. We are moving on to Item Two, which I'm sure will be a lot easier. And that is, excuse me, I need to put my glasses on. So that adopt a resolution submitting to the qualified voters of the town of Fairfax, a measure adding Chapter 2.10 to Title Two of the Fairfax Town Code to change the office of town clerk from an elected office to an appointed office at a general municipal election to be consolidated with the statewide general election to be held on November 5th, 2024, and setting rules and deadlines for the submittal of arguments for and against the measure. And this is Town Manager Heather Abrams and Town Attorney Janet Colson.
I'll start off. Thank you. Mayor and members of the council, I have just one slide, which Christine will put up for me. So the question before you is, and I apologize that S has slipped over, but the question before you is whether you would allow the voters to decide whether the town clerk should be an elected position or whether it should be appointed. Right now, we have an elected town clerk, and we also have two separate paid positions. The elected town clerk is unpaid, and the current elected town clerk has delegated 100% of the responsibilities of the clerk to the deputy clerk. There is a limited pool of elected town clerks, because it must be someone who is 18 years old and who is a resident of Fairfax. And those are the only qualifications. So that leaves the town in a situation where a clerk, an elected town clerk, who is only able to be fulfilling that role either through election or recall and then election, and their only qualifications would be 18 years old and a resident of Fairfax. So all of the professional duties that need to be done by the clerk's office, all of the filings, record keeping, all of responding to PRAs, all of the, working with people through the elections process, all of that is very technical. It's very important. It's part of the democratic process, but it really, at this point, requires a lot of training and understanding. And the accountability for the elected clerk is only through the ballot box. So if the elected clerk was to, and I, I'm, our current elected clerk has, you know, no problems, but is inactive, are, if that person was to, say, make a mistake or, you know, something like that, the only accountability is through the ballot box. There's no, there's no other remedy. There's nothing else to be done. So why ask the voters whether they want an elected clerk or an appointed clerk? As I mentioned, this position is becoming more and more technical in nature. And this question was put before the voters in Fairfax about 16 years ago, in 2008. And at the time, I believe the number of elected clerks in California was about 65%, and it's now at 80%. So most town clerks or city clerks within California by far are professionals. It is full-time work, and in fact, we have two positions in this, in this department now that are paid positions. Nine out of the 11 Marin clerks are already appointed. Fairfax and San Anselmo are the outliers there. And we do this the way we've done it for, you know, since the town's inception, potentially with the, with the exception of whether it's paid or not, it's unpaid. And the needs of the town and the office have evolved over time, so that you see these questions about, you know, is this correct per the Brown Act? Have we gotten this noticed correctly? Have, all of these questions have to be handled by the clerk's office. And so it's very, very important that that person is, or people are full-time, professional-trained. And we do have that professional staff, but we still have this position with an elected town clerk. And so our thought, my thought was that by allowing, allowing the voters to decide, we could have that information. We've heard that kind of call before in this room, let the voters decide. And so the question for the council today is whether to put it on the ballot and let the voters decide or not. And if you choose to put it on the ballot, if you vote for this tonight, then it would go on the November ballot. And if you do not, then we'll continue in this situation. And if in the future, you know, the town clerk has run unopposed for many, many years, probably more than multiple decades, it may be very challenging for us to find someone to fill that position. That completes my report.
Okay, did you have? Okay, so I, I saw a finger first over here, Councilmember Cutrano.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for this very sort of simple two columns here. It's helpful. I guess my, I have a couple of questions. The first question is, to your last point, if we didn't find someone to step into that role, which is, as you said, unpaid, but is basically a full-time job, if not two full-time jobs, what, what happens then if, if someone didn't step into that role?
Well, if the council's unable to appoint someone, then.
I'm confused about if you're talking about the elected position or the.
Correct.
The employee.
Just the elect.
Oh, if we don't have a clerk, the council can appoint.
Okay, got it. That's helpful.
You can also hold a special election. I mean, there's.
Just keep trying.
Keep trying.
Yeah, so it could just end up costing more for you to do special elections, those kinds of things. And I think, you know, to my mind, it's fairly clear in a population that's shrinking. We have a shrinking population in Fairfax, about 7,300. And of those 7,300, how many of them are adults, are free, are interested in serving, and willing to stand for election, which does cost a little bit for them, even if they're running unopposed?
Well, then the, there's a final piece to that sort of collection or bundle of things that people need to have checked off in order to want to do it. If people aren't, don't have the qualifications, I guess, we were lucky with the last, our current town clerk, Michelle Gardner, who was able to also work for the town, independent of the elected role. What, what happens if someone is elected to that role but is unqualified or doesn't want to go through the certification processes that clerks are, that we suggest clerks go through and all of those different things? Does, do some of those job functions or do some of those costs end up falling on, like, the town attorney's office or, or legal counsel? Or I, I know that there's a connection between legal counsel and our clerk and just making sure everything is in alignment with all sorts of state laws. But how, how does that work in the case that someone has, like, no experience? Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. So it, yes, it will fall both to the professional clerks and also to the attorneys. And so that's, you know, part of my job as manager is to try to make sure that your town organization is efficient and effective. And that can, that can be a problem if someone is unclear on what needs to be done and ask, you know, say, asking the staff to do things that are not correct. And then staff would have to not only deal with that issue, but also unwind any mistakes that an unqualified, you know, just person who is from the town.
And if an unqualified, like, if just like a, a person decided to, if they did something and it ended up being a real risk or legal risk or election, or issues with the election or all those sorts of things, does that, does then the cost get incurred by the, the town? Or so it's just, it's just kind of like a legal liability that hangs out there a little bit?
Yeah, so the costs would be incurred by the town and the only account. And the only accountability as opposed, if someone makes a mistake.
There could be a recall of the clerk.
You could have a recall of a clerk. You could have a re, just the same way. And this has happened in other towns where the, you know, something very bad happened. And, and then the staff and the council were not able to have any influence over that elected clerk. Then that elected clerk would have to be recalled or voted out by the residents.
Got it. My final question, forgive me, but thank you, is so these, the nine other communities in Marin that do the appointed approach. So the way that that works is that there are hired folks and the council just appoints the hired person to be the clerk, as opposed to having the hired person and then a separate elected clerk, that it might be just an unqualified person that has to rely on the hired person anyway. Is that right?
Yes, so you could have a situation where the council appoints them directly. Or if the council chooses, the council could delegate that
To the town manager.
To the town manager. And that's a choice that the council would have at a later date.
Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
I think Councilmember Hellman had some questions.
Yeah, just for the sake of just understanding the current state and a couple of things that you shared. So could you help delineate the distinctions in roles here? And to the extent possible, so we're saying, we understand it's an unpaid position, right? Whether it's appointed or elected, it's unpaid, correct? Or no?
The elected position is unpaid.
If you still had an elected position and the council appointed, it would still be unpaid. It's, it's an elected position regardless of whether the person actually won an election or it was vacant and the council appointed. It's still the elected office and therefore it would be unpaid. There's no provision for payment.
Okay. And so I'd like to understand the distinction in, you said, Michelle Gardner, current elected clerk. She has delegated her responsibilities to our deputy clerk. Is that right?
Yes, so the, um, let me try to clarify. It's, it's a little confusing to be, you know.
Yeah, but I, I really want to hone in on how many hours and what is the work that this role is doing for no pay?
I, I appreciate that. Thank you. So the elected town clerk has no, no job description. There's no requirements, only that the person be 18 and a resident, at least 18 and a resident, and a registered voter. And so it has no pay. It has no required hours. And in the past, we had, it just so happened that we had the elected town clerk also fulfilling a paid position, a staff position. And so Michelle Gardner was that person. She retired from her paid position and she is doing no hours and receiving no pay. But she is in that elected position.
So when you say there's no job description and no requirements, is that common? Is that a state thing? What, is that just a legacy Fairfax thing? What, why is that? I mean, even if we were to recruit folks to run for election, how do you not, how does, how do you describe a role that has no job description?
Well, that's part of the problem.
Why don't we let Janet answer that question?
So I have personal experience with this in another city. And a person was elected to the position of clerk. And they, in that city, had it set up to where the clerk had to attend council meetings and take minutes. And she did not. She attended council meetings and she tweeted. She did not take minutes. And there were no minutes produced because there was nobody paid to do that. That was not the setup that they had. There was a public outcry about that. And we had to explain to the voters, the residents, the press, elected officials, et cetera. There's nothing that we can do about that. She's elected. And so the remedy is at the ballot box. And eventually, after a great deal of controversy, she resigned. And they put a measure on the ballot to make it an appointed position. They pay a certified, trained clerk to not only take minutes, but to do all of the other duties that are required of the clerk. But that, it was a, a year-long controversy that was extensive. And we, we were confronted with people who said, well, but that's her job. She's supposed to take minutes. That's what a clerk does. Great. We can't make her take minutes. Only the voters can vote her in, vote her out. That's all that can happen here. If she's not doing her job, it's a ballot box remedy. And so that's one of the reasons why elected clerks are a rarity now.
Because there's no recourse if they're not performing.
Correct.
But how are they not, sorry, how are they not performing if there's no official job description?
Yeah, I think what Stephanie's getting at, we have no requirements that, for a town clerk. So basically, it's ceremonial. And in this, I just, I think, and so basically, in the staff report, it talks about in the old days, old days, it was intended that clerks would take minutes and do roll call. That was it. There is no specific job description. There's no real requirements of the town clerk. And the many duties that our deputy town clerk does, as well as the position that's vacant, are very vast. And so what I believe, there is no job description. There are no job requirements, unlike your situation that you talked about. We have nothing specific requiring the unpaid town clerk to do. That is why Michelle Gardner is not required to spend any hours and not working for us as the elected town clerk. So I think, does that help? Because there isn't any requirement. So why this position still exists is very strange when it has nothing to do. But I see Vice Mayor Blash having a question. You can follow up.
Yeah, could you just reiterate, please, the two that are elected? The two towns or cities in Marin that are elected today? So today, there's Fairfax and San Anselmo. Okay.
Okay, we don't need your comments. When it's time for public comment, I will take your comments. So Vice Mayor Blash had a question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure we've totally untangled how we got the basically three sort of positions. But anyway, so one of the questions that I have is, does, this clerk doesn't have any supervisory duties, right?
Yeah, the elected one doesn't, I mean.
The elected one doesn't supervise anybody.
Right. So if we had, we're still going to, so I guess I'm trying to figure out, we have this empty position, right? That is the paid position. Does that position have to be a Fairfax resident?
It is illegal to require residency of employees.
Okay. So we could be recruiting for that position now?
Yes.
All right.
I believe we already did recruit for that position. And that's why it's no longer posted, because interviews were held and the town manager makes that decision.
Right, okay. So that's good to know. And then, like, so say we elected a town clerk and that town clerk was, you know, completely incompetent or whatever that we worry about. And then there were these two paid positions. What interaction would that town clerk or power would that town clerk have over the two paid positions?
None, except that it's, I think, very confusing for someone. I imagine myself, if I was a resident and I went out and I, you know, got myself elected as town clerk, I would want to be doing things. And if I'm unqualified, I don't know what I can and can't do. I think that would be very frustrating.
Okay, so if, so if voters decided that they wanted this to be an appointed position, there would still be three positions. It's just that the third position would be appointed.
No, then we would be able to have just two positions.
Thank you. Okay, that clarifies a lot. And so I think you described in the staff report why we had elected town clerks in the first place and why that's changed. So I think that's okay. I just wanted to kind of understand a little bit about like the different scenarios that might play out depending on, you know, if, if indeed this went on the ballot and the voters chose one way or the other. So I think that's most of my questions. Thank you.
I think we have a follow-up there from Councilmember.
Do you have any more questions? I have more questions.
Well, maybe we should let Councilmember Ackerman go first. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, not so much a question. I just wanted to, or play this back in summary. I like your slide there. So it sounds like the situation that we have currently, which is kind of here for historic reasons, because things used to be so much simpler than they are now. It leaves the town vulnerable, it seems like, to several different things. One is that there's a limited pool of people who could even run for the town clerk position. And maybe there'd even be nobody run. Another problem is that whoever ran doesn't necessarily, isn't, doesn't know what the job would entail or what they would need to do. And I, I just want to, I just want to say that the, both Michelle and now currently Christine, who do actually all that work, it's an enormous amount of work. I mean, you described it as being very technical, definitely. And it's also very large. It's a lot of work, not easy. Probably, well, I know that with Michelle, there were times when she wondered why she was doing this. It's not an easy job. So it's to have that mixed up with a position that we have no control over. So then a third problem is that if, if we did get into a situation where the elected town clerk just didn't know what to do, they, that, there's nothing we could do about it. As you say, it would be, we'd have to wait until the next election or there'd have to be a recall. And that would still take a long time. And the town could just be in chaos. It could cost us enormous, it's not just money, but just the chaos, the things that we would, that we could fail in. I'm almost trying, I'm almost thinking of an analogy that if we had an elected police chief, you know, that, that symbolically served as the police chief, as opposed to what we have now, which is a person who has made their life to learn how to do police work and is very good at it and very dedicated to it. It, it just would be chaotic. And so that's, I'm just trying to kind of reiterate, and I see you nodding, nodding, that that's sort of a summary of the situation.
Right, but can we just expand on that? Because clearly, the police chief is, has a job description and staff, right? So the, I like that analogy, but at the same time, I've learned a lot. And I, I can guarantee you, the public does not understand what we're hearing tonight. And so when I hear, when I read this staff report and the ballot question is, shall the office of Fairfax Town Clerk be appointive? That doesn't tell the voters it's unpaid and that there's no job description. So can we not make it more clear and informative, inform the voters that say, that says something more like, shall the office, or excuse me, shall the unpaid office of Fairfax Town Clerk, which holds no roles, which holds no responsibilities, be appointive?
It's more appropriate to put that in the impartial analysis, which lays out the facts.
Well, that's factual.
It is. But in the ballot question, we're really kind of constrained by the elections code. And this is the way the elections code wants to see this written.
Okay, so despite the fact that there's no disputing, there's no opinion about whether it's unpaid or not, we can't put that in there?
No, because that's your choice. That's a council choice. It's not in our code to pay this clerk. You could. The elected position.
I think it, it also could be confusing to voters. I think the ballot question needs to be very clear to the voters. And if it
You know, I think we're getting it.
So you're just saying that the argument for and against needs to get into the detail of
That yeah, when the impartial analysis could.
That's where the opportunity is.
And the impartial analysis could as well. This is a toggle switch.
Okay, I would just wanna, just want to say, we're getting into deliberations. I would like to go to public comment. We're going to give people two minutes. But I want to remind folks, this is not a decision tonight as to whether or not the town clerk should be elected or appointed. The decision is whether or not we should put this question to the voters. That's very different. So we're not making any decision. We just want to say, shall it be put to the voters? That's the decision that we would make tonight. So with that, Mr. Egger, would you like to provide your comments?
Frank Egger Cascades, the town clerk, has been an elected position in Fairfax since 1931 for 92 years. The qualifications for elected town clerk is the same as the qualifications for elected town council members. How's that? The staff report was hidden from the public until today. It says it's difficult to find a qualified Fairfax resident to fill the position of town clerk. The report gives the town manager the right to select and hire the new town clerk. The San Anselmo council recently voted two yes and three no to make their town clerk appointed. It failed. Fairfax has always been able to find a qualified resident to be town clerk. We had Francis Lustigay and Judy Anderson for almost 40 years combined and Michelle Gardner for the past 10 years. The town clerk runs Fairfax elections, enforces conflict of interest, Form 700, is in charge of the town council minutes and town records. The public needs an independent elected town clerk, not one beholding to the town manager, town attorney or town council, just the voters. I urge you to reject this proposal to make Fairfax Town Clerk appointed. The way the ballot is written is not select, appointed or elected. It's appointed only, yes or no? Please keep the right to vote for Fairfax voters for the town clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to clarify again. The decision is not whether we would make the clerk appointed or elected. The decision is whether or not we would put the question to the voters. Go ahead, Michael.
All right, thank you. Do we need an elected town clerk? Yes. Our government is successful because of checks and balances. Fairfax has its own checks and balances with the elected town clerk and the elected town council. They are elected from citizens of Fairfax, people who are supposed to protect our town and our voices.
I'm sorry, Michael, I pressed the wrong button. I was trying to turn my, go ahead.
It's on? Okay. Our town clerk is a ceremonial position, elected by the people with no direct pay. This position does not cost you anything. This ensures an unbiased opinion, not beholding to the council or council. The clerk directs their deputy clerks to perform duties to ensure compliance with all election language, for resolutions, ballots, initiatives, referendums, elected officials' filings of the 70s, which some have been filed absent of information. Also to ensure that the minutes accurately represent the meeting and will be kept in a safe place for public review. The clerk receives service of process, answers to the California Fair Political Practices Commission, responds to subpoenas and PRAs. Most important of all are the PRAs. The clerk is the official custodian of records. The PRAs tell us how the town is spending our tax dollars. The clerk can employ someone to draft language for a response to a PRA, FOIA, sunshine subpoena, et cetera. But it is the clerk's obligation to certify to the best of her knowledge that the information provided is true, accurate, correct, and complete. The town clerk certifies compliance with election laws, unbiasedly ensures the signatures collected and the language presented are correct. Remember, your elected officials are elected by the people to represent the voice of the majority while protecting the voice of the minority. Our town was incorporated in 1931 with a town clerk. Keep our elected town clerk position.
Thank you, Michael. Next speaker, please.
Philip Solivary, Fairfax. Madam Mayor, you reprimanded the audience and cleared the room not 20 minutes ago for interrupting you all up there and I believe staff. The town attorney just interrupted Frank Egger during his, what he was saying. And I find that to be subjective. And I think if you're going to reprimand the, the public, you should also remind staff not to interrupt the public when they're speaking. As to the town clerk, we absolutely need the town clerk to be an elected official. The problem is, the public does not trust you and does not trust the town manager. And until that trust is built back, we need to have an elected official, not an appointed person as town clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Susan.
Susan Brandborg, mayor and council. I won't go over many issues that were brought up by Frank Egger and Michael McIntosh. I think it's very important to keep an elected clerk. It's part of our democracy in Fairfax. I don't want to see the town manager and the town attorney running our town. I want to make sure there are checks and balances and sunshine on this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Next speaker, please. Mark.
Mark Bell, Fairfax. I agree with the previous speakers. And if you are going to consider this, I mean, there's a lot of really convoluted stuff that doesn't make any sense. You say there's no job description, but then there's a job description. You say it's full time. And I know Michelle did excellent work, but I don't think she was working 80 hours a week, every week because of these two positions. You know, you have on the salary schedule, two deputy clerks at like 100,000 plus a year. I would imagine that a lot of things they can deal with and that the town clerk can move those, move it along and just make sure that things are going as they should, where residents can get full disclosure in a timely manner as far as PRAs. I don't know, I'm just like listening to this and, and you have an appointed, you have an elected position with no qualifications. But then like you would have this appointed position that is saying that you don't get paid and, and you don't have any qualifications. But that like staff would just kind of assume that, which they've done in the past. I don't know. It's, I think that before you even think about whether this needs to be an elected or an appointed position, you need a much clearer, concise idea of what you'd be voting on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Deb. Deb London. No, do not put this on the ballot for a vote. The town manager and the town council has truly destroyed the public's trust. And this is just one more way to have your way. And, and just because you keep this as an elected position does not preclude your ability to appoint when necessary. I'm sure there's been times through history in 1931 where the pool of prospective people ebbed and flowed. It doesn't mean that it won't get easier in the future. Yes, San Anselmo, I was just at a town council meeting where they voted it down. And actually, a member in the audience stepped forward and volunteered his services for the elected position. I don't know, I haven't followed it, but I don't really see that there's any outreach. We have a lot of talented people in our town of Fairfax that might be willing to step up, but they need to know the position is available. So that's what I have to say about that. I mean, the cost of special elections and all that stuff, I mean, what, it's equal to one special interest crosswalk? I mean, you know, it's nebulous. And why is it an unpaid position? You have the power to make it a paid position, to make a job description, to make requirements. And you know, the last thing I want to say about this is, poor Michelle, she, she was running ragged, but it was because of the town council and their bad decisions with the rent control and just cause evictions. She created an uproar with those ordinances and created so much chaos in work for her. She, she ran away. So, you know, the finger points back at you. That's all.
Thank you, Deb. Next speaker, please. Todd.
Hi, Todd Greenberg, downtown Fairfax. I second all of what's been said so far. This should not go on the ballot. And I think you really need to examine some of the facts, the supposed facts that have been presented and question the veracity of what's been said tonight. I am just constantly amazed at what is trying to be put over in the consolidation of our efforts going on on the citizens of Fairfax. Citizens mean local residents, by the way, I looked it up. And contrary to what the town manager's report says, there are a lot of duties listed on the town of Fairfax's webpage for the town clerk. If you don't have an elected town clerk with a system of democratic checks and balances, you are just going way too far. You are abdicating your responsibility to represent the citizens of this town. The town clerk serves as elections official administering local elections. The town clerk serves as a local filing officer, records and maintains official record. The list goes on and on. Okay? Also, the town manager said there's no duty responsibilities. Here in the Fairfax immunity code, section 512060, additional power of town clerk. In addition, all other powers conferred on the town clerk. The town clerk shall have the power for a good cause shown to extend the time of any filing. And it goes on and on and on and on. What has been presented here tonight is patently false. You need to keep an elected town clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Mallory.
Mallory Gaidheim. I agree with everyone. My problem right now is every time I agree with everyone, you guys vote oppositely of what we do. So I would really, really appreciate if you listened to the town that elected you guys to represent us and not represent yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers in the room? Seeing none, are there speakers on Zoom?
There are several speakers on Zoom.
How many?
Seven.
Okay, let's go ahead.
The first speaker doesn't have a name. They look like they're calling in from an iPhone. You are unmuted.
Hi, thank you. Charlene Eldon, Fairfax resident. Can you hear me okay? My phone is a little dying. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
And now we can't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now? I just got another.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I do believe that we need to vote on this. However, I don't believe in the US democracy because in 2012, this, a study from Princeton found that we live in an oligarchy, meaning we are run by the wealthy 1%, as is evidenced by this room. And I also don't believe in the US's right to exist on genocided stolen land, just like Israel. Thank you.
This is a soft topic. Okay, so you're. If folks in the room, we don't need your help up here. I will manage this. Okay, next speaker.
The next speaker is Deb Benson, followed by Rick Hamer. Deb, you're unmuted.
Deb Benson Cascades, Fairfax. Do not put this on the ballot. What I've heard here is there's a lack of accountability with an elected town clerk. The clerk is now accountable to the people. If they're appointed, they're going to be part of the staff and accountable only to the staff and council. We're already pushed out of the, of the mix there. If the paid deputy town clerks are now performing the duties of the town, the elected town clerk who has no duties, why change? Except to keep the people out of the loop. We want ballot box accountability. The staff is composed mostly of out of town non-residents who really don't know this town. We have two apparently professional clerk positions to advise the elected town clerk. The same argument could be made for town council members as to qualifications. The town manager, same for town manager. Town manager has assistants and many staff positions to assist her in her job. The town manager mentioned very bad things that happened in towns because of the inadequacy of the town clerk. I'd like to know which towns what happened. Attorney Coulson talked about a terrible situation where the town clerk wouldn't take minutes. And that led to a bad situation. Well, why is Christine Foster not taking minutes? Why are we paying about $800 a pop to a contractor? Councilmember Hellman states that the public doesn't understand this issue. I think that is condescending. And I urge you to vote to not put this on the ballot. Keep our democratic rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Rick Hamer, followed by Cindy. Rick, you are unmuted.
Good evening, council. I support keeping it the way it is and not putting this on the ballot. I believe one of the, one of the big criterias or one of the qualifications that is not being mentioned about the elected town clerk is that they are of Fairfax for Fairfax. Whereas appointed town clerks are not necessarily from Fairfax. We need Fairfax to oversee Fairfax, just like our elected town council is. And I do believe that, that, you know, the, this, the organization of the clerk's office, it was Michelle who solicited the candidates for deputy town clerk back when the opportunity was open. And I think this is important. I think that the, the reducing the, or I think that centralizing all the control into the town manager and not having it elected, I think this accountability is extremely important. And I, I don't think this should be put on the ballot measure. And we just spent a lot of time talking about how much is it going to cost in order to put something on a ballot measure? Well, one way to reduce the cost of ballot measures is don't put this on the ballot measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Cindy, followed by Sierra. Cindy, you are unmuted.
Hi, good evening, everybody. This is Cindy Ross. I'm a longtime Fairfax resident. And I'd like to read something that I found online from the town of Yountville, California. It says here, "The town clerk's office provides oversight and administration for legislative proceedings of the town council and its subcommittees. As the elections official and filing officer, the town clerk administers municipal elections, campaign finance, and conflict of interest regulations." There's also from the city of Lodi, California, a little blurb here. "Positioned between the governing body and the citizens, city clerks are charged with ensuring open and public, public government, one of the basic tenets of democracy." There's a lot more that can be said about elected town clerks. But I want to just say that I think it's really outrageous that you're trying to put this into an election issue. We've had for 90 years, over 90 years, an elected position. It's worked just fine. To now suddenly say that, I know, well, we're not deciding it today, but we need to put this on the ballot and waste all this money is really an insult to all of us. You need to keep this an elected position, just the way it is. Don't waste any more time, energy, or money on putting this on the ballot. It should stay the same. We need the proper oversight from an elected town clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Sierra, followed by another unidentified caller. Sierra, you are unmuted.
Wow, there's not one speaker in the House or on Zoom tonight in favor or support of this. And I'm afraid, I'm not afraid, but I'm adding my voice in agreement with pretty much everyone else. And I, I shake my head. It's just like, why? Why are you doing this to yourself? Why are you doing this to the town? It's like, anyway. I would also like to nominate former town clerk Michelle Gardner for sainthood. Because I think she kind of deserves it for everything she's done for the town. And she has a big heart. I told her I'd be her campaign manager and file papers for her to run for town council when she left. And she about murdered me. Anyway, it's like, you know, bad things happen. Good things happen, too. Are we going to spend our lives being in fear of this and that? And are we going to change something because we're afraid some bad evil thing's going to happen? Rather than trying to work with what we have and trying to create some goodness and community in our own town with the systems that are already here? I think there's a line in the Declaration of Independence, even some, you know, antiquated document at this point that says, you know, it's the right of the people to alter and change their government. But at the same time, don't do it willy nilly. It's like systems that are in place shouldn't be like just changed for no apparent reason because we feel like it. If it's not fixed, I mean, if it's not broken, why fix it? Or as Wavy Gravine says, it's like the system isn't broken, it's fixed. An independent clerk is important. And I seriously hope that we can find someone as good, as nice, and with as big a heart as Michelle Gardner, because that really is the heart of this town. And someone that can hold that energy and cut through, excuse my language, the bullshit and bring some heart and some peace, because we need it. Hope we find someone good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is someone calling from an iPhone, followed by Jody Timms. iPhone, you are unmuted.
Hi, I don't have internet tonight. Comcast is out, so I'm calling from my iPhone. This is Lynn. So I agree with everything everyone else said, except for that first caller. I also want to thank Michelle Gardner. She's just been fantastic. I think that the town manager and attorney have taken on too much power in that they're the higher in the fire of whoever walks in. I think the problem with appointing, you guys want to make it so we can't elect anybody anymore. Or do, or elect anything, or have a voice. I feel like you're just trying to push us out. I feel like you're just trying to push us out of the room. It's not good. We need an unbiased person. And I think the town will work it out. So I'm concerned. I'm scared. And I don't like what this town council and the town has been doing. Other than the wall property, that was good. But I mean, we're hiring people for this town that, appointing people that don't live in this town. And have you noticed how much signage has gone up around here?
Lynn, that's a separate issue.
It's a separate issue, but it's the whole point. I, I, I hear what you're saying, but it's the whole point of a local person versus an appointed person. So it is and it isn't. So thank, I hope you can clone Michelle Gardner. That would be the best thing to do. But I don't like how much, how much control the town manager and the attorney have and what you guys are trying to pull here. It's like, there's enough heat towards you guys already. Like, just stop poking the bears, because that's what it feels like. And it does feel like we're all saying no, and you guys are going to put it on anyway. That, I mean.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Jody, followed by Jane and John. Jody, you are unmuted.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. Um, I, I'm just utterly shocked by this conversation and just want to say, I beg of you to please put it on the ballot and let me as a voter decide if I think this is a worthwhile position or not. Every other speaker who's spoken and is convinced an elected clerk with no qualifications and no job, well, no skills, no qualification, no accountability, if they want that position to continue, they can vote for it. I, as a resident of Fairfax, would like the ability to vote on this issue, on whether this position should be continued. So I would request that you put it on the ballot and give me a choice and not assume that everybody who's spoken is the only point of view in this town. So that's my opinion. Please put it on the ballot and let the people decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Jane and John, followed by Eva. Jane and John, you are unmuted.
Taking my call, I, I have to say I support the 99% of the people who have spoken this evening. And I hope that you will listen and pay attention. Because if you go ahead and, and buck the will of the people who have spoken tonight, the majority, it's, I don't like to say, but it's like the final nail in the coffin of disrespect and that it be blatantly evident that you are not listening to your people who voted you in. We don't want you to be in control of the town clerk. Plain and simple. There does need to be checks and balances. That's how it's set up. Why, why? Whose idea was this? What's the point? There is no point. Please, listen to the people. I beg you, you have one, one chance here to show that you really care what your people think, instead of just doing what you want to do and what you think is right. Please, I beg you. Don't, don't change it. Let it be. Listen, listen. John, do you want to say something?
No, no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Eva. Eva, you are unmuted.
Thanks, I hope you can hear me okay. Eva Crisanti here. And I just wanted to point out the kind of obvious paradox here. Uh, people want to be able to elect the city, the town clerk, uh, which seems like a good thing. Uh, checks and balances kind of thing. So it, it doesn't seem clear why they wouldn't want it to be on the ballot, since clearly the majority of people uh, want to, want to maintain the ability to, to elect this, the town clerk. Uh, therefore, I don't really see what the problem is with putting it on the ballot. Um, I do think it, it, you know, both putting it on the ballot and maintaining the ability to have an elected town clerk uh, seem inarguably more democratic processes. I do want to point out, as someone who doesn't restrict her CPRAs to the town of Fairfax, uh, you can have clerks who are appointed who deliver great results on a C P R A. And you can have clerks do the opposite who are appointed. It really doesn't seem to make all the difference in the world. But, but I, I, I think, uh, I hate to say it, but there are, both sides in this case are right. It should be put to the, it should be put to the voters to be able to decide that they want to maintain the ability to, you know, have it still in their, on their election. There's, you know, I mean, I, I don't understand what people are arguing about. Just put it on the ballot and let people, let people decide. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
There are no more speakers on Zoom.
Okay, bringing it back. Um, I just want to make one comment before we go into deliberations. So there were 17 people that spoke on this measure. We have something like 5,700 registered voters in Fairfax. And so, um, people who are not here and are not speaking doesn't mean that they don't care. And, you know, you need to be quiet in the back of the room. Is that, you know, there is a lot of folks in the room. And I think, I find it sort of confusing that there were folks who uh, were demanding that we put something on the ballot and now saying we shouldn't put something on the ballot. So um, let's go to deliberations by the council. Uh, I see it, oh, wait a minute, we, we've adopted the finger approach uh, vice mayor Blash.
Yeah, um, so I just had this question because people are bringing this up. Again, does an elected town clerk have any oversight over the processes of the hired town clerk? So say if I am the town clerk and there's a P R A and am I even involved? What, can I go and say, I don't think you're doing that P R A right, or you're not getting it done fast enough? Like, how would that interaction take place? I mean, is, is there any sort of supervisory or um, oversight function to an elected town clerk?
No, so tho, the job descriptions that you heard, those are the office of the town clerk. And as you can tell, they're complicated. They're getting more complicated as the state and local laws continue to evolve. And so that's why um, we need those two paid positions. And that leaves that elected position as sort of an orphan.
So basically, the duties that people are reading off of the website are the duties of the office. So those are pretty much taken up by the paid town clerks, not the elected town clerk.
Exactly.
So the elected town clerk is not going to necessarily be processing Form 700s or, or completing P R As for us, right? That, that's not what they're going to be doing.
Correct.
That's correct. Rarely, um. Anymore, the, the office of the town or city clerk is a, is a very technically uh, complex one. There are a lot of reporting requirements to the state. And um, it is not that the elected clerk, if there, if there is still elected a clerk in a position, it's not that they do it, it's that the office itself does it. And more often than not, the people doing it are the ones trained to do it.
Right, so if I, if I was, like I said, if I was the clerk and I felt like something wasn't being done right, would I have any authority to say, oh, hey, I want to do the P R A a different way?
No.
Okay, so then the other question I had is, if people are really opposed to this, do they get to put an argument on the ballot?
Yes, this is going to have the same argument for and against.
Okay, so.
Should it go on the ballot? And, and there will be a section in this resolution we can add to talk about if, if the council wishes to appoint no more than two members to write an argument for. That's your choice.
Okay, so I have other things to say, but I just wanted to put those two questions out there and then I'll let other people go and then I'll probably add more.
I'd like to just add one more thing that I heard that was, that was not correct. Um, this is not um, to make this position appointed by the town manager. The council appoints this position.
I actually did have one more question. So um, I just realized, sorry, I looked at my notes. Um, and then I'll add comments later. But uh, you know, we have, as we've noted, um, I think there's something like 28 pages for the rent stabilization and just cause ballot measure, right? So that's, that's a lot of pages. Um, how many pages do we think this would take up? Like, a couple pages? I don't know.
This one, um, I defaulted to having printed because it is quite literally, um, if you look at Exhibit A, it is um, one and a half pages.
Okay, so that's not going to incur the considerable cost in printing at this. Okay, just curious, okay, thank you.
Just before we go to more deliberation, um, what happens in the event that elected town clerk does something that is a huge problem for the town that might incur liability? Like, somebody just acting on their own, uh, giving out confidential information or whatever? Is there?
Not responding to Public Records Act request, let's say.
Correct.
Yeah.
So um, what, is there, okay, so you need to, I, I realize, Stephen, you're having a little trouble hearing. You can move up closer. Okay, um, is uh, there's liability incurred by the town?
Yes.
If someone got in who um, was hell bent on doing some things that might incur liability for the town, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so we would have to incur costs to fight that kind of liability, correct?
Correct. And to ensure that that didn't happen.
Okay, so um.
I guess I'm still, and I, I just want to respond and appreciate the feedback and no way wanted to be condescending. This whole deliberation and public comment and so forth, it's been very illuminating for me. And so my comment that there's no way that the public understands is because I'm still trying to understand this. So what you just, what you just said lies in the face of what I heard earlier, which is there's no responsibilities. So if there's no responsibilities of this role, why would they be responding to a P R A?
Well, if they did, was what I heard.
But how would they even receive the P R A?
You know, if they, it's, it's if they did, it's a hypothetical. If you had an elected clerk who um, decided that they wanted to come into town hall and they wanted to be present, somebody came to the counter with a Public Records Act request, they took it, uh, handed, you know, they were handing it to somebody, they handed it to this person. Um, if we, if the other clerk, the appointed clerk didn't um, see that, didn't receive it, um, it may or may not be responded to. It may or may not be responded to appropriately. Um, it interferes with the smooth working um, of the city clerk's office, town clerk's office. It interferes with uh, potentially making sure that all the obligations and responsibilities are fulfilled.
Mm-hmm. If, if I may just add, so an example is town clerk has an email and people can email them and ask them questions. And in this case, the town clerk, who is now only in the elected position and um, has uh, retired from the paid position, is not checking that email, is not responding to that email. But if someone chose to do that and did it wrong, the town would have to take on responsibility for unwinding that or um, defending that, whatnot. So that, that's the risk. It's a risk.
Yeah, I'm, so just to follow up on that, um, and then I'll give it back to Councilmember Hellman, um, because she raised an issue that was important in terms of the chain of communication. All of the clerks are going to receive communication from the public and then something could happen?
Well, each of us has um, town emails. And we encourage people, for example, to use the one email that goes to all council members, right? And we would encourage people to use the email that goes to the clerk's office. But if they used that person's individual email, um, we, we're not able to, we're not surveilling that. We're not checking that, right? So it's not, it's, right now, that person is not responding.
I believe those emails are redirected to Christine Foster, so this.
They are right now, yes.
And so we're not missing things. But what I believe you're speaking to is if there were, we were very lucky to have Michelle Gardner, who, as Sierra said, maybe for sainthood, if we believe in that. Um, but uh, you could get somebody who was not upstanding, who wanted to cause a lot of havoc. And would get those emails and potentially cause havoc and potentially liability for the town. But let's, um, uh, I think Councilmember Hellman had further questions or deliberations.
Well, no, this is all helpful and I'm, I guess, I feel like there could be a procedural um, safeguards put in place to protect against some of what I just heard. And you can have one email address that goes to all the clerks and with an auto reply that says your email has been received. Only P R As are off, you know, only this person is authorized to respond to these types of inquiries. I mean, there's, there's, I think, things you could do. But that's it.
Okay, other deliberation by members of the council. I see Councilmember Cutrano.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, there's some parts of this that I'm, that are a bit confounding, which is just to like, don't let people vote on this. Like, I don't, I'm not quite, there was a lot of comments on that and I'm not quite sure why people shouldn't be able to vote on it. But the, I guess the question I have is like a practice, please, please don't speak from the crowd, Kathy. You speak when everyone's talking and it's really disrespectful. Um, so the, the thing that I'm wondering about is, like Linda Roberts, right? She's the registrar of voters. She's appointed. She's not an elected person. And then we consolidate all of our elections in Marin and she oversees all the elections. And no one has an issue with a regis, appointed registrar of voters for the entire county of Marin running all of the elections and all of the staff that work underneath the registrar. Um, but are there systems in, I mean, it's, there's a good question like baked into this about checks and balances, systems in place for making sure that um, staff are following certain types of procedures, not just legal procedures, but um, you know, making sure that they're, they're working on behalf of the public and not on behalf of any particular actor. Um, and I, I guess, like, are there systems or uh, like any sort of oversight bodies that, that engage with appointed clerks or registrars of voters or people who handle such sacred or such fundamental pieces of our democracy?
Well, um, it's a good question. There are, um, there are training programs and Christine has participated in um, several of those already. And there um, uh, there are certification programs for, for clerks as part of the profession. Um, um, Michelle is wonderful and um, I hope she won't mind me saying she was trained as a lawyer before she came here. And so um, we got extremely lucky um, to be able to have someone um, who had that Venn diagram of all those things to be able to be the um, elected town clerk. Um, being the town clerk in Fairfax and anywhere is a big job. And um, it needs the, it needs to be those, you know, professional positions that are trained, that are part of the um, professional organizations that can reach out. As you mentioned, um, most of them are, are appointed at this point because it's full time. It's um, it's a big responsibility. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, that, that, that's helpful. It's, it's just something to, to grapple with, I think, a little bit. I, some of these types of positions feel like they're from the early eras of the, the country and are a bit archaic in that way, in terms of like, the ceremonial nature of them. And at the same time, a lot of those things have been pushed into a public administration capacity in terms of the actual day-to-day job, even though we've retained the ceremonial component. Um, just trying to like, work, work through the, the other elements that um, I think are, are valid from the public about, you know, what, what's, what's at the core, at the center of the concern about not just whether or not it's appointed or elected, but whether or not we allow people to, to vote directly to determine what things we do administratively and what things we do um, via an elected office. So I'm. So I'm just grappling with that a little bit and I need more time to collect some more thoughts on it. Thanks.
Okay, and just want to mention one thing that for most of her years here, Michelle clerk managed the elected town clerk as well as the professional town clerk by herself. And we kept begging her to hire more folks. And we were lucky that over a year ago now, I believe, if I'm correct, Christine, Christine joined and they started being able, it was a really heavy workload. And I will say that in most towns, there's two or three people doing this work and these are small towns. I don't know how many Nevada has or San Rafael, but I think there's quite a few, given that they have, San Rafael has something like three assistant to, assistant town managers as well as the town manager. I'm sure they have a lot of clerks. So I think Councilmember Ackerman had some deliberation.
Well, yeah, also collecting my thoughts. I find it indeed puzzling that, that people in the public are opposed to being able to make this choice on the ballot. It seems bizarre. I think, but I have a, my own theory as to why that is. I just think that it's not, it just not, it, it takes a while to think through and it takes, takes some familiarity with how the day-to-day operation of the government, of this government works, which I've certainly learned a great deal of in the course of seven years on this bench and, and many more years before this, working on, with this town. It's, there's a lot to it and I just, I really, it's, we see, I've heard people speak of checks and balances and I certainly appreciate that concept that in theory, all of the things being equal, you would think, yeah, if we have an elected person as opposed to an appointed person, that gives more power to the people to elect them. But it just, it just seems like it could work quite the other way if we weren't as lucky as we've been. As, as Town Manager Abrams said, we were very lucky in so many ways. We were lucky to have Michelle. One of the speakers said we should clone, if we could clone Michelle, that would solve the problem. Well, absolutely. I mean, if we, there's presidents we've had where if we could just clone them, we wouldn't need to have any elections anymore, but that doesn't work, we can't do that. But we were lucky that Michelle was able, with her own foresight and her own willingness to stay with the job until she had a good succession plan, that she brought in Christine. And Christine is, we're very lucky to have Christine. And so as for doing the job, it was, it was a smooth transition and we've had good people doing the job. If that weren't the case, it would really be a problem. And it'd be a problem for the public. It wouldn't just be a problem for council members or staff members. It wouldn't just be an inconvenience, it would be, it could be a disaster. We really need this job to be done well and it's a complex, multifaceted job. But, and I appreciated that, well, I'll just try to be brief, but I, I, I don't, I don't think that, that the, that, all right, I'll leave it at that. I've got to process this some more. It's, it's just absolutely baffling. It comes back to being absolutely baffling that people in this room, and this, this room does not, I believe, represent the entire town. I know you might disagree with that, but as Mayor Kohler said, we've got a whole lot more people out there and we've got time to understand it better before November. And I think we should have the opportunity to, all of us weigh in at the ballot on this question and hopefully understand it better at that time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I ask another question really quick?
Go ahead.
So, can the council, this maybe is a question for Janet. Can the town council require duties and description, job descriptions and performance? Well, I guess not performance evaluations, but duties and descriptions of the elected clerk because of all of these technical functions? Or are, is there no opportunity for the council to require that because they're also an elected officer?
No, you can, you can have duties normally performed by the clerk's office. You can separate them out, you can put them for an elected clerk. You, to do that, however, you would have to understand that you have no control over whether they get done, how they get done, no control over that at all. And so that was the situation that the city I was speaking about found itself in. They had some duties for the elected clerk and those duties included taking minutes at council meetings. And she didn't do it and she wouldn't do it.
By no control, you mean no authority?
No authority to do anything about it. There was no discipline, there was no docking of pay, there was no firing. The person was elected. Ballot box was the sole remedy for not doing the job, doing it poorly, doing it incorrectly. There was no other, there was no other mechanism.
So it's like some communities, even if they have the ability to, to sort of create some duties, might not want to, for fear that the jobs will not get done?
Yes.
And that's, okay.
Absolutely.
That's helpful.
But I guess I just, sorry, I'm really stuck on this. So I heard my colleague, Councilmember Ackerman, just say, and everyone were all in alignment, that Michelle was amazing and wonderful, but I don't want to conflate the elected role with her other role, right? Like, she was.
Right. The duties that she did.
Her plate spilleth over and she delivered and Christine's delivering.
Right.
And those are not what we're talking about.
No.
The job that we're talking about has no description.
Right.
Has no responsibilities.
Has no duties. Right.
And thus, you could argue, has no risk because they will not be doing anything. But I heard you say loud and clear that they may have, they may intercept, they may get.
They may decide they want to.
They may respond inappropriately and that's where the risk lies.
Yes.
So I could speak or? Well, no, the mayor goes last, so why don't you go ahead and then I will do kind of a semi wrap up. And I think we need to make a decision at some point.
Okay, and I think Councilmember Cutrano might have had something else to say. But I had another question, which is, so let's see, this goes to the ballot and the people of Fairfax say, we don't want to have an elected clerk anymore. I mean, do we have to appoint someone to that role or are we just staying with the two paid people?
So then the office of, of town clerk would be appointed by the council. But would that appointed?
Yeah, I'm confused about this.
Wait a minute, if, if we put it on the ballot and the answer is no, it is not appointed, then in 2026, that position is available again.
Yes.
And so at this point, Michelle Gardner is still in the elected town clerk.
Yes.
We assume that she would stay until 2026 and then someone else would have to run. So you, we're not appointing anyone if the answer at the ballot box is no.
Exactly.
Right, but she's, but I think what you said, well, I'm sorry, what I heard you say was if the decision at the ballot box is that it's now an appointed position, it doesn't do anything to Michelle's term as elected city clerk. It continues until 26 because you can't shorten an existing elected term. So she would be clerk until 26 unless she resigned before that. But let's say she's clerk until 26, in 26, it would no longer be on the ballot. At that point in time, the council would appoint a, a appointed town clerk and that can be somebody sitting in the employee position.
Uh huh, okay, that was, that was my question, that answers my question. I just kind of started thinking, well, does it have to be?
Doesn't have to be another person, it can just be that the council appoints that position. Can be somebody already sitting as a deputy town clerk.
So and then when they're, if they, if that was the case, they would no longer be deputy town clerk? They'd just be town clerk or does the position title change?
The council would appoint a town clerk.
Okay, that, that just clarifies something because I was kind of like.
And, and I hesitate to do this, I'm hoping it adds some clarity to it, but it may not. It may add some confusion. Treasurer is the same way. And you will see in many cities, they don't have an elected treasurer anymore. And in fact, the finance director is the appointed treasurer, appointed by the council.
Okay, so I mean, I just want to say like, I, I have a degree, degree in public administration. I have several years of a PhD in planning. You know, I read about this stuff and it's, there's always new stuff to learn. I mean, and you learn different stuff when you're in office than you get from, you know, reading this material. So I just want to put it out there that it is confusing to people and it's confusing to people who even know stuff about local administration and government. So, you know, I just want to say that I, you know, have been very committed to, you know, democratic process and giving a, a voice to a broader range of people. You know, not everyone in Fairfax comes to the town council meetings, like there's like 57, 5800 voters. And a lot of people make their voice heard at the ballot box, not by coming to the town meetings because they're long and arduous, they don't necessarily send us emails. So I don't, you know, I, I have some concern about denying them a voice in this decision. And so that's, you know, just one thing that comes up to me. You know, I just, I'm not sure why you would block other people's right to take part in this decision. You know, I think everybody in Fairfax needs to make, take part in the decision. You know, I don't know if the concern is that maybe other people in town wouldn't agree with you and vote differently. You know, I have no idea, but I am very concerned about making sure that, you know, all of Fairfax gets to weigh in on this particular issue. So that's, you know, just, I'm hearing more and more things from our staff that makes me feel like, well, maybe it's not such a bad idea to put it on the ballot. So, you know, I'm just going to put that out there that it's important to give people in Fairfax a voice and they may all say, we love having an elected town clerk, let's keep the elected town clerk. And then that would just be validation of the point of some of the people here tonight that we heard from the rest of the public that they also agreed. So, you know, that's where I'm at right now. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Cutrano, and then I think I'll do the wrap up.
Oh, okay.
Go for it.
Well, actually, I'm, I'm happy to just make a motion at the appropriate time, if you want to do a wrap up.
If I may? So we have an issue to decide, I believe. Do you, does the council wish to appoint no more than two members to write an argument for?
Let's decide if we're doing this, okay? Let me do the wrap up. So I said before, we have something like 5,786 registered voters. We have 17 people that spoke tonight, a few in favor, just a few in favor of putting on the ballot. Most were not. I want to remind folks, this is not a decision by the council to appoint a town clerk. It is a decision to be put before the voters and I will repeat what Vice Mayor Blash said. This is democracy. And last year or the year before, people were demanding that we put something to a vote and they did the opportunity to do a ballot initiative. We did not put that to a vote. So I am feeling like the rest of folks, and I know that I spent many years working 80 hours a week, traveling all the time, I was not at council meetings. And many people are living their lives and they want to be able to vote. That may be their one decision that they make. And so I would like people to be able to vote on this issue. And if it, if it fails, we move forward. If it's successful, we move forward. I want to also say, we've gotten a lot of really kind words about Michelle Gardner, which she very much deserved and I wrote her proclamation. I also want to say that Christine Gardner, Christine Foster, I've changed her name now, has done an excellent job with the many tasks that have been thrown at her. And she always reminds us that she needs to be objective as the town clerk. And I know sometimes it's hard because people are throwing things at you left and right. Sometimes people are not courteous, but she does a very fine job of stepping into part of the shoes of Michelle Gardner and I want to say how much we appreciate that. And, and Christine doesn't live in Fairfax, but she grew up in Marin and longtime Marin resident and has really demonstrated in her eight months, nine months, 10 months, a commitment to this town. So that's a little separate, but I just want to say, I am supportive of moving forward to put this to the voters. It's democracy. Okay, Michael? Be quiet. Okay, so Councilmember Cutrano?
Yeah. I'm happy to make a motion to approve this resolution submitting to the qualified voters of the town of Fairfax, a measure adding Chapter 2.10 to Title II of the Fairfax Municipal Code to change the office of town clerk from an elected office to an appointed office at a general municipal election to be consolidated with the statewide general election to be held on November 5th, 2024, and setting rules and deadlines for the submittal of arguments for and against the measure.
And, and just to be clear, we're going to vote on this part and depending on where the vote falls, we will, if it's votes to put on the ballot, then we will make a decision if there's council members who want to write the argument for. So could we have a second potentially on that?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
You need to turn your mic on.
I'm going to vote no. I, I'm not convinced that this needs to.
All right, we don't need to discuss it.
Councilmember Cutrano?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash?
Yes.
Mayor Kohler?
Yes. Okay, thank you. So that was a four one vote. Now, the question is, do we want a couple of the council members? Are a couple of the council members willing to step forward to write a ballot argument for?
I mean, just to clarify, so if, you know, happy to, you know, work on my, work on my writing and whatnot. But the, so it's essentially taking some of the things that we've been learning tonight and boiling those things down and making the, the case, but essentially sharing a lot of the information that we've learned tonight about why it might make sense to have an appointed town clerk. And then if there are opponents, they could say, here's the case why you shouldn't and why you should keep it as elected, right? That's how this, this unfolds?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm happy to, you know, participate in that.
So I'm happy to hone my writing skills with you as well. So unless.
Could you please make sure it's very clear that it's unpaid and that there's no job.
We will do the best we can. And so with that, I'd like to see if we can take a vote if the council wants to.
Authorize.
Authorize Councilmember Cutrano and Mayor Kohler to write the ballot argument for.
Yes.
And Madam Clerk, oh, we need a motion for that?
Yes.
We need a motion, Councilmember Cutrano, you want to do it?
Sure, happy to make that motion to authorize myself and Mayor Kohler to draft the ballot language.
No, ballot argument.
Ballot argument for the measure on behalf of the town of Fairfax, the Fairfax Town Council?
The council, authorized by the council, yes.
If I can ask a question? So would presumably Janet, would you be writing? So would presumably Janet, would you be writing a?
Impartial analysis.
Impartial analysis as well.
Yes, yes. So the argument for is an advocacy piece. The impartial analysis is not.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so that was Councilmember Cutrano, second, Vice Mayor Blash. Madam Clerk, could you do a roll call vote on that?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes, thank you. Um, we have another item on the regular count, uh, regular agenda and um, I'm proposing when we're finished with this item that we take a quick break. We've been sitting for quite a while. So um, who is taking this item on?
I will.
Town Attorney.
Okay, this is a, um, adopting a salary schedule. It's a resolution to approve and adopt a publicly available pay schedule for all employee positions eligible for CalPERS membership in accordance with CalPERS requirements. And um, this, we've done this in the past. Uh, this is something that is required by PERS and um, we want to make sure that the council has the uh, current and correct salary schedule adopted. It needs to be done, preferably in a, um, not on consent, but in a regular meeting. It's a regular agenda item. It's attached. Um, and as I said, we've done this before, just to make sure that we're in conformance with CalPERS requirements.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of staff? Uh, Vice Mayor Blash?
Yeah, so you just said it has to be on a regular agenda. Does that mean it has to be in a regular meeting or can it be on a special town council meeting?
It can be in a special meeting. It's just consent as opposed to not consent. So it's not on consent and that's why it's here in a regular, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Um, seeing none, uh, let's go to public comment on this item. And uh, did anyone want to speak on this item? Uh, I see Mr. Greenberg standing up.
You know, I keep hearing that we have to do certain things. And I wouldn't question it coming from the town's attorney, except that it seems like she's also told us things that aren't accurate earlier tonight. So I'm wondering, what are the other considerations here that we're not being told about? I'd like you to develop a matrix for processing information rather than dragging out the meetings the way they get dragged out, so that there is guidance for your town manager and for your town attorney for the staff reports and the information that you are looking for as a council, so that these meetings can be run efficiently. Because I see very little information. I saw a table of what all the different pay schedules were, but I see no analysis of what that does for the cost of the town's employees going forward. There's new titles. We seem to have a problem getting job descriptions when people request them of the town staff. This all needs to be put forth in a comprehensive report prior to doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Next speaker, please.
Mark Bell, this kind of goes uh, with a lot of things that have gone on tonight. Yeah, the, uh, the agenda posting was uh, very late. I think it was only today, which of course doesn't give people a chance to contact people they know in other towns to get an idea of what they're looking at. So I'm looking at these full-time employees, Public Works Planning Building Director, uh, Chief Building Official, Principal Planner, Senior Planner, Associate Planner, Associate, oh, Assistant Planner and Associate Planner, excuse me. That's a million sixty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars in salary, not counting benefits. Sure seems like a lot of planners for a town that's losing population now down to seventy-three hundred. Uh, there's a item on here for a marketing and communication specialist at a hundred and three thousand dollars. What are you marketing? What are, are you communicating? Is that just kind of like spin doctoring, but a nicer title? I mean, who knows? And then, of course, there's no attorney's salary since the attorney seems to burn through her allotted salary, even when it's gone up 85% uh, way before the year comes up due to excessive billing for not delivering on what we're, we're paying for. So um, you know, I'd like to, you know, have some time to like, you know, contact my uh, friend in a, in a town about the same size as us and just see exactly what. You make pronouns since like, oh, well, Sandra Fell has three blah, blah, blah. Really? I don't know. Is that true? I don't know. I listen to you guys and most of the time what you're spewing isn't true. And when you check it out.
That's.
And when you check it out, and when you check it out, and when you check it out.
You're disrupting the.
It's different.
You're disrupting.
But I mean, I, you know, I asked you earlier, Donald, when you have an attorney who gives false.
Time is up anyway. Thank you. Goodbye. Okay, Michael.
Oh, this will be an easier one. I would actually question the town council of seeing all those positions filled with a very specific job description. Because I've seen in the past is you guys will budget a position and all of a sudden your budget includes the finances for that position. But if it's not filled, it just goes kind of like, well, accounting into your general account. I think that any position that's not filled should be excluded from the budget and should not be allocated for those funds and just assume that, oh, we budgeted this extra money. It wasn't filled, so we're just going to spend it however we want. I find that very disingenuous. I find that you guys could certainly extend a little bit of time and your own jobs descriptions, you're talking about the clerk, should have very specific duties such as overseeing that each one of these positions are filled. And if they're not, those funds are taken away from that budget and not just allocated extra money so we can go spend it on something that your constituents might not approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other speakers in the room? Pamela.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Um, I didn't have a lot of time to really get into reviewing salaries. The thing that sort of caught me was, did you do comparables to other communities? And if you did, are they there and appropriate for the population here? Because that is the, the appropriate way to look um, like you've done um, due diligence for the community, because we are paying for it. We are. And now that I'm retired, I'm really noticing that my dollars are, uh, you know, I can't afford like I used to be able to afford. So I would suggest you do some comparable comparables, even if it was one page. It would make me feel better. Um, and uh, let's see, there was one more thing. Ah, at the budget meeting I was at, and this, and this, and you can do this. I asked that you all look at the attorney's fees were three hundred and eighty-nine thousand. And I asked, could you please represent, how is those, that, that chunk of money divided up? Or like, what are the certain services that the attorney's doing? Because that is a lot of money for a very small town. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
Hi, this is like 38 positions here, millions of dollars. And you worried about the cost of printing our initiative language on our ballot initiative. That's insane. This is like monopoly money. She's right. It's a small town. I know in the budget ending June 2023, Janet's salary went over by two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. She was already at like two hundred and sixty-eight. And I think a lot of that was the um, paralyzing rent control and just cause eviction that was written. And um, I, I have not looked at this year's budget, but I'm sure her overages are even higher. It's got to get a handle on this. It's just insane. We're, we're paying her so much money in all these other positions, 38 positions. And I think that Michael's right, this is monopoly money. If, I think that you should need to validate and make sure this, these are actually being paid to individuals and that it's just not going into um, play money fund for colorful uh, crosswalks and flags and, and whatever else your self-agenda desires may be. So that's all I have to say. I, I can't believe you're worried about what printing will cost for our initiative language to be properly printed on the ballot initiative.
Thank you, Deb. All right, um, any other speakers in the room? Are there people on Zoom?
There are two speakers on Zoom.
Okay.
The first one is calling from an iPhone. I don't recall her name. Um, it might've been Lynn.
Lynn Yeder.
Yeah, and the second caller is Ava. Lynn, you are unmuted.
My name is Charlene. Um, I grew up in Marin and I have some experience with Marin politics, just trying to be an advocate after George Floyd in 2020. But I have never witnessed such anti-democratic, anti-democratic, undemocratic proceedings as what I've witnessed in this town council.
Okay, this is, this is not on topic.
That is exactly what I am talking about, Madam Mayor.
It's not on topic.
And Sandra.
This agenda item is on a salary schedule.
Yes, and I'm about to comment on that because this entire night has seemed like non-stop corruption. At first I thought this was just a silly little thing to put on the agenda instead of Palestine. But instead you're talking about not wanting people to read private emails on the off-chance.
Okay, I'm going to cut you off. This is not on topic.
That is exactly what you were talking about when you were discussing this hiring position. How is that not on topic? I'm bringing up what you brought up, which is that you don't want people who are going to be bad actors to be in this job.
We need to cut you off. This is not on topic. It's a salary schedule. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Eva. Eva, you are unmuted.
Thank you. Uh, with reference to comments that were made about um, Sandra Fell staffing, I did want to provide a little perspective, um, maybe a corrective. Uh, I was at, I had a discussion with the city clerk of Santa, City of Santa fell uh, last week and I was informed that the reason they're taking so long on uh, one of my CPRA requests is that they're down to two staff members um, handling CPRAs. And the city clerk has had put in many months ago, a request for additional uh, assistance. She, she requested a temp.
Eva, this is not on topic. We need comments on the salary schedule.
I'm simply pointing out, this is what can happen when, you know, these positions aren't filled. Um, I, I would suggest that anything for communications, uh, you know, is when, when basic tasks aren't being done, that should be deprioritized. You don't need PR, you're doing a perfectly good job of communicating what, you know, what your positions are. And unfortunately, the more money that towns and municipalities and counties spend on PR, uh, the more embittered I think people become. As, as, you know, rough as sometimes these meetings may feel, it's still better than the pavlum that, you know, your average consulting firm or marketing uh, firm can provide or, you know, so-called communications consultant. So that's something, you know, you want to deal with the nuts and bolts of what you're supposed to deliver, um, rather than communications, because you guys were elected to essentially communicate and, and that's what you're doing. And, and I don't think it's, it's necessary for you to hire someone to tell you what you're already doing fairly well.
Thank you, Eva. Are there any more speakers on Zoom?
There are no more speakers on Zoom.
Okay, bringing it back for deliberation or motion, uh, Vice Mayor Blash.
This is something that I saw some disinformation on social media about too, which is the marketing director position. You know, I just want to note, it's a salary schedule. So this doesn't necessarily mean who we have on staff right now and how much we're budgeting for each of them. This is a salary schedule that just lays out how much people could earn. And if I'm right, I mean, I could be wrong here, but it's just that every public agency has a salary schedule. It's not like some bizarre thing. Um, we have one at UCSF. And um, the other thing is, is that we have this position for marketing and communications, whom I believe was Camille, who was a part-time worker, so that would be her salary if it was full-time. Uh, we don't have Camille anymore. We don't have a PR person. This was a person who put together, if I'm correct, a newsletter for the town. Um, a task that has now been taken on by our town clerk. Um, so this idea that we're hiring a consulting firm, well, consulting firm is not an employee, so that wouldn't be on this. And this is not about, you know, a PR and marketing professional. This is about somebody who was producing a newsletter for us, we could get out to the public what the town is doing and any information they need to have about town services. So I just want to put that out there. I could be wrong. Um, town manager Abrams can correct me, but it is something I've already looked into.
That is correct.
Okay, and then also get to note that the town attorney um, is, is, is a contractor. And yes, she's an officer of the town, but she's an, a contractor. So she's not going to be on the salary schedule per se, um, as far as I understand. Um, and yeah, that, that's all I want to say right now. Thank you. And I do, I do want to, well, I do want to say one thing, you know, I know that we talked about having um, what the attorney's um, fees were going to broken out in a basic level and I think that's going to happen.
That's on the budget.
But that'll happen sometime. So, thank you.
Okay, and just to remind folks, this is a salary schedule that is needed for people that are in the CalPERS system. It's required so that ultimately people can get their benefits. And it's a procedural requirement. And there are many positions on here that are not filled. They're not planned to be filled, but they are not eliminated from the position. And uh, this isn't play money where we haven't filled a position. It doesn't go to whatever, anything, if you read the budget carefully, you can see where all these uh, positions lie and it shows if there's quarter position, half a position, et cetera. Uh, would someone like to make a motion?
Yes, I'm happy to make a motion for this extremely straightforward schedule, um, and, and a very straightforward staff report. Thank you. Um, so I'm uh, happy to make a motion to adopt a resolution to approve and adopt uh, the, a publicly available pay schedule for all employee positions eligible for CalPERS membership in accordance with CalPERS requirements.
A second.
Madam Clerk, would you want to do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break, but before we do so, because I believe we are going to come back at 10 o'clock. We're supposed to be reviewing the agenda and ascertaining which items, if any, will be continued.
I think we can make it through, yeah?
I think we can finish.
Yep, happy to make a motion to waive the 10 o'clock rule.
Okay, would someone like to second?
Second.
Okay, and roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Ackerman.
Russon.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes, and we will reconvene at 10 o'clock. Thank you all. Okay, um, we're going to get started on the consent calendar. I want to mention that on the actual items for the budget, which is number three, there's actually two number threes. So just so you know, there was number three that we just did on the regular agenda, but there was a glitch. So the materials for the budget, which is actually item four on the agenda, say three.
It's actually true for, for all items that followed when I downloaded the reports, they were all one.
Yeah, so, so when we make a motion, we'll have to be clear on that. And I wanted to correct that for people who are looking at the numbers getting confused.
I think it's now four on the.
I think it's now four on the website.
Okay, I know it is. But the problem is all the materials have the other numbers on them. So we got a little mix up. But before we start consent calendar, I just want to, first of all, read, "The council can approve all items on the consent calendar in one action. Alternatively, any council or staff member can remove items for separate discussion and voting. Public comments for consent calendar items are taken collectively, not item by item. During this period, speakers may address any item on the consent calendar with each speaker allotted up to two minutes and limited to one comment session." And before we do that, I want to ask my fellow council members if anybody wants to pull anything off consent or ask a question of any items. I see nothing.
One, one question, and I, I'm sorry to belabor this question so many times. And I know that Michael was on earlier, but I don't know if Michael's still on now. But it's now been like two times asking about this, like breakdown in the budget for the town attorney. And like the town attorney confirming that their office does do these breakdowns. And I, I don't know if it was just like too hard to pull it together, but it's something that seems like we ought to have been able to figure out.
I am on if you want me to respond to that.
Okay.
Please.
But just quickly, I have asked this question several times. The understanding is the breakdown would be between general and specialized. And from what I was told, they were not able to get the information in time.
I have it. I, I sent it. Let me, it didn't.
Okay, well, let's let Michael answer and then you can provide it.
We had to publish the, we had to post the budget last Friday. The information wasn't received by Friday. It was only just two days since the last meeting. So due to the tightness of the timeframe for being able to put this out, we kind of made the decision that it will be in the final budget. You know, and the, we'll, we'll post those as it becomes available. It can be part of the final adopted budget, but it, there wasn't time to get it into, you know, this, this, this round, just because of the time between the last meeting and being able to post for this meeting.
Okay, just one follow-up question is, I had asked a number of questions, including this. And we have a whole supplement that just came out today with the corrections that I had asked for, with the exception of the attorney information. So I'm wondering why we couldn't have captured that today?
Um, we, we didn't capture it. I'm sorry. And I think we can have it read out now and we can repost that page with the correct information.
Okay. And what page is it on in the budget?
Michael?
Yeah, it's.
It's on the budget page for the attorney's department.
And what page is?
Page 17 of the, the budget.
Okay. All right. So would the town attorney like to give us the information split between specialized and general?
So we have two months left of this fiscal year, right? And there is a projection or there is a figure for just the first 10 months. So if we're doing a projection for the entire 23, 24 year, general services is 296, 149. Special services is 182, 159, 50, 50 cents.
And that's for fiscal year 23, 24?
Both actual and projection, yes. Because we have, it's only through April 30th for actual figures. And so May and June are projections.
Okay. And then for, do we have any estimates for the adopted budget, which is 340 total for 24, 25?
Did we do those? No, I don't. I don't have those numbers.
You mean a projection that breaks out the projected general services versus projected special legal?
What she just gave us was projected for 23, 24.
Right.
And so we would anticipate that for, because there was, would be an extra line added, general versus specialized, that for FY 24, 25, we would have a split between general and specialized. And I guess we don't have that tonight, but.
But you could.
I can tell you what general services and special services contain. Maybe that would help?
No, I don't think it helps. I mean, we understand that the general is the general work versus the specialized attorney expertise for SEQA, for CalPERS, those kinds of things.
Litigation.
But I think what we're, what we've been hearing a lot about is they want a breakdown. They want a breakdown of much more detail, but what we talked about was having generalized versus specialized. And are you saying at this point for FY 24, 25, it's too early to provide a split in the 340,000?
Um, it, you know, I would, yeah, it is kind of early because the special, you have to understand, includes litigation, which may end. It's not an ongoing thing that, that always happens. So you can say, for example, employment law, you have a certain amount of that every year. And you know that pension benefit types of services, you probably can estimate what you have for that. Litigation comes and goes. You, you really can't estimate. Depends on the type of case, depends on where it is in time. It's hard to project special. I would not imagine that general would be more. In fact, I think it would probably be less. But, and that's because we're done with the housing element. We're done with a number of things that, that are included in that general services.
Well, here's what I would suggest, that if, if it's too early to predict that split, at least put the 340 under general and then have a note at the bottom explaining that we would split that later on in the year as we have a better sense of what that is. Michael, are you getting this? Michael, are you there?
I'm on my iPhone. I have to figure out how to hit unmute here. Yeah, we can, we can put that into the final version. It's not part of the numbers for the budget. It's information that's part of the page. And I'm happy to put that in as an informational exhibit in the attorney budget page.
Um, I think that's not what we're talking about. I think we're talking about the page 17. I, I think, I think you were talking about doing something in the overall description. Or am I understanding you incorrectly?
I'm not sure I understand your question, Barbara.
So can I clarify too? So what you're asking for is in addition to the, the breakdown of general and special legal services, looking back at the last fiscal year to figure out what the actuals are, you're proposing that we break those two things out and, and try to project the breakdown for the upcoming budget for the proposed fiscal year 24, 25.
So what I'm saying, after listening to Janet, is that it's too early to predict that. So I would leave the 340 under general and then have a note at the bottom that explains that we would split out general and specialized as we go through the year, when we have a better sense of what those are. And I would also say that the other thing on the bottom, we should have a note of what specialized includes versus what general includes. And the last thing I want to say is the numbers don't add to the numbers in the budget, so we need to reconcile that.
It's, it's only the 10 months, you said, the numbers you gave us, right?
No, she projected.
I projected for the entire year based upon 10 months of actuals.
I see. Okay. The other thing I was going to just really quickly suggest or raise as a question of the, if the general of the total between general and special, if the general, it looks like it was like 62%. I don't, I mean, of course, there's probably variance, but one of the things you could do for projections is look at the last couple of years, that breakdown and come up with an average, just as a safe projection. So it's just an alternative to just shooting from the hip and choosing 340 and putting a note.
Well, one of the reasons also to understand why it's so hard to project the special services is because it includes things that we don't know whether they're going to be here. And it also is a, a varying rate. The general services are set rate. The special services are of different rates, depending on the years of experience of the attorney providing the service. Right?
So if I can clarify, because I, um, line 821 is being used for, and has been for years, everything from BBK. But what you're asking for is that general services from BBK would go in 821 and special services would go in 822, so that you could see those separately?
I would suggest, to keep it simple, is have 821A and 821B.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So rather than trying to then change everything below that.
Uh huh. It's going to be non-accounting-ish.
822 is professional services. So you want to do it that way? Okay, whatever.
Just on the theory that outside services and professional services are linked, but professional services tend to be those other resources that we're pulling.
Okay. Well, it seems like it'd be better to actually clarify what 821 is. General legal services, outside, professional services, specialized, outside attorney, or something like that.
Whatever makes it easier to, to account for how it's all working, right? So we'll leave that to Michael and the auditing team and everything. The other thing I just want to say, and I know we're still kind of, we're going to go to public comment, but I recognize that we're requesting a change. And changing this beautiful document can be hard too. But I do think it behooves us to try to continue this effort of teasing out specifically for this, because it's such a large budget item and there are so many questions from the community about like the total scope. It's kind of like the clerk, right? The clerk does all this stuff. The town attorney, the office of the town attorney does all of this different stuff. But it shows up generally as either advice from the town attorney while we're in this room or as this big number on this sheet. And it doesn't, you have kind of that intro page that talks about department achievements and department goals and objectives. But I think it'd be good to, for the council and the public, in, as we move forward with these budgets, to try our best to tease out the, the different areas that we're spending money in. Just so the town has a good understanding, especially, you know, if you're spending all your time on housing element or PRAs or whatever it is, it's, it's good for us to know. It's good for the community to know how much, because your time is very valuable. So it's important for folks to know what's, what's taking up time.
Okay. And I had a number of questions that I asked early and they were really changes to a few pages that was in the supplement. Anybody have any other questions? This is just one consent item. Regarding other consent items, I want to point out that there is an error on the resolution on item number four, or second item number four, the utility users tax. When you look at the resolution on attachment B, the second whereas says, "The town council has reviewed a preliminary operating capital budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023." That's not right. It should be 2024, 2025. Just a typo. So any other questions or anybody want to pull anything from the consent?
I don't want to pull anything, but I, can I make a comment to just get it up, up front? So thanks to staff and the mayor for including the Gun Violence Awareness Month proclamation. Just wanted to flag for the public or anyone watching or for folks in the room and on the dais that Moms Demand Action and Everytown USA are going to be doing their annual Wear Orange Week the end of next week. But the, there's going to be a walk across the Golden Gate Bridge and a rally at the Golden Gate Bridge related to gun violence awareness in this, this month for which we have a proclamation, which will occur Saturday, June 1st, this Saturday at 11:00 AM at the Golden Gate Bridge, but on the, on the Marin side. And it's a really wonderful event and just encourage everyone to attend. And thanks again for the proclamation.
Thank you. And just to mention, we also have a adopt pride month proclamation. So, and also thank the town manager, the town clerk for bringing us as requested that we will place Chamber of Commerce banners on downtown light posts from July 1 through about October 31, 2024. And we're also paying for the banner placement. We paid for the banners, which was about $5,000 for the chamber. And we also paid for their placement before, but we're paying for them again, which is around $1,000. So with that, I'll open it up to public comment. And Christine, could you set the timer, please? Thank you. Oh, I don't see it up. What is that? Oh, okay.
I'll be brief.
I'll do it on my phone. Thank you.
Okay. Basically, I want to thank Barbara and Chance for bringing forth, as you said, tease. I think it's very valuable for the public, but also for the council. So you can actually make an accurate projection of your budget for the upcoming year to break down such a large expense. And so I'm not here to criticize anything being done, but it's very valuable to you. And you don't want to ever change your chart of accounts, okay? Keep your chart of accounts consistent, because that's the only way you can compare a prior year to your current and your future year. But within that chart of accounts, as one of the two, you said, you could do an A, B, you could do many things. So with under, I think you said 21, 22, you could have A, B, C, D, E and be consistent that A represents time of the town council meetings, B for closed sessions, C for specific things like rent control, D maybe for PRAs and all these things. But it would give you the opportunity to really project your future expenses. It'd give the public an understanding of which costs we're paying for, which costs we incur, such as our PRAs. So we also have a better understanding of the overall budget for this particular expense. But if you keep your chart of accounts the same and just drop down like little subdivisions within that out, or that like number, it's very easy to total it. It's very easy to see it. Just be consistent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next speaker, please.
Not that you ever listen to me, but I would like you to pull items four, five, and seven for separate discussion because they deserve more time. Item four, if this is properly printed on what was outside, I know you talked about using different numbering, is adopt a resolution regarding the operating budget. Five talks about setting taxes. Seven is cost to be incurred upping banners. On the budget, we've already talked, I'd like you to pull it, but you won't. The town attorney's charging 37.6% or anticipated charge 37.6% more than was budgeted. That was in the budget document here on page 17. And the town attorney tonight has told us her current projection is 47.6%. Wow, that's a lot of increase. And we just got special in general? Wow, I'm really confused. It is so hard to understand what is being billed for, two lump sums and it's a runaway cost. Up 47.6% versus what was budgeted. Holy smokes. And I'm going to compare that for you to make it easy on other budget items. Police had 11, 16 and 25. There's two different sections, personnel and operating expenses. And you can go through it, but then there's 11 for public works and streets and 17 for public works and streets. This is, again, personnel, operating expenses. I could go on. But almost every single other large, important budget category has fine detail. There is no excuse for what the accounting industry calls block billing. This needs to be much more detailed than it is, and you can pull from the invoices and see that.
You can wrap it up. You're over time.
Okay. I'd like you to pull five and seven. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Mark Bell. On number seven, I believe that the town paid $5,000. I think you just said for the Chamber of Commerce banners. I'm assuming that included putting them up. We're spending another 2,500 possibly for the gay pride banners. I'm assuming that's up and down. Another $1,000 to put up the, put back up the Chamber of Commerce banners. When you can rent a small lift for 80 or for 80 bucks a day to put up banners? I don't get it. Like, why aren't you on an austerity budget when we have roads as they are? And you're not going to get a bond measure through? Where the money should be going is for the infrastructure of this town. That's like 5,000, 7,000, that's 8,500 right there on banners. You could have not done the crosswalk, up to $10,000. You could have bought four banners for another 80 bucks. Put those up. Now we're hitting the 20,000. You can do some work with $20,000. And if you add that in, everything else that you've wasted money on, we're into hundreds, if not millions of dollars.
Thank you. Frank?
Frank Iger from Cascades. I request the town council fill the vacant police officer position so we have two officers on duty 24/7. Having only one on duty between 2:00 and 7:00 AM is not safe. Two on duty during the graveyard shift allows one officer to work the neighborhoods and one officer to work downtown area. I noticed the town revenue from parking, like roadway fire clearance and moving violations has been substantially reduced. And I'm wondering who ordered the reduction in police enforcement this year, coming year? But here's some good news. I received my California Coastal Conservancy agenda in the mail. And it's got item number three, consent items. And consent item three E says, consideration and possible authorization to disburse up to $500,000 to the town of Fairfax to acquire approximately 180 acre wall property in Marin County for the protection, restoration, enhancement of natural resources, wildlife habitat, open space, California Native American tribal cultural resources and compatible public access. It's not a consent, Keldus, that's a guarantee. So congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We worked on that quite a bit. Thank you. Other speakers in the room? Oh, thank you, Frank. Are there speakers on Zoom?
There are two speakers on Zoom. The first one is Diana, followed by Holly. And there's a third one. Diana, you are unmuted.
Yes, it's for consent, and it has to be on consent. Thank you.
Hello? Hi? Can you guys hear me?
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. This is Diana. Sorry, I lost my voice. I am the granddaughter of Holocaust survivors. You guys might remember me. I implore you not to agendize the resolution about Israel.
Man, this is not, this is on items on consent. This is not open time. This is not agendized. So I'm sorry, this is not the right time to comment. Thank you.
The next speaker is Holly. Holly, you are unmuted.
I just wanted to ask a question. When is the right time to talk about the resolution? Could we speak about it?
Holly, this is consent. This is not agendized, so we can't ask your questions on this. Thank you. No, no. Okay. Anyone else on Zoom? Thank you. So bringing it back to the council, I'd like to know if someone would like to make a motion. So there's a couple of things to remember. There's a supplement to the budget that if you make a motion for the consent counter, and you need to mention the supplement as well as the changes that will be made for the town attorney that we discussed. And then the second piece is for the resolution. It's item five on the agenda, but it looks like item four on the actual item, which would be the resolution B, setting the utility users tax rate for 4% for fiscal year 24, 25, with the change that I noticed. And I just want to ask the town attorney, because we have a problem. The agenda has the correct items. Some of the supplements are the correct item numbers. I think that we should say items three through nine on the consent and also items four through 10. I mean, I don't know how to do this. It's very confusing.
It should just be four through nine, right?
Yeah, except for the
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, all right, should we just say four through nine on consent with what I just mentioned?
Yes, that'll work. Four through nine on consent with all attachments, even if previously adopted with different numbers or previously
Oh, with supplements.
Supplements with different numbers.
And also with the changes we discussed regarding the town attorney and the budget, as well as item 5B, the change in that resolution.
I'm happy to make the motion that the mayor just made.
Thank you. And who wants to second?
Second.
Okay, so that was Councilmember Cutrone and second Councilmember Ackerman. Madam Clerk, would you do a roll call vote?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrone.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. And now we move on to future agenda items. I think Councilmember Ackerman had something he wanted to bring up.
Yes. This is just my only opportunity to talk with all of council on this and also before the public, whoever's up the slate. The, a while back, we got a great deal of public input one night on this, on one council meeting, encouraging us to to adopt, to consider a resolution about the Gaza, the war going on in Gaza. And we all agreed at that point that we should put it on to a future agenda. But since then, that seems to have changed quite a bit. We've gotten a great deal of public input that mostly by email, but also people speaking at a meeting recently that I find quite compelling, that requests that we not bring forth a resolution of that sort. So I would like to say that I I support that. I don't think we should bring that resolution forward. And just wanted to put that out and see whether we could change our decision to put it on to a future agenda. That's it. I could give my reasons for it, but I know you've all read your emails and there were, there are many of them. Thanks.
And I don't see any discussion up here. I guess we'll take comments on Councilmember Ackerman's proposal. And I see two people in the room, three, maybe more, wanting to comment. So we're going to have to do this on, and five on Zoom. So we're going to give people two minutes. And since we're having technical difficulties, we'll do this on our phone. You need to press the button. The timer, so we're doing it on our phone. So I'll tell you to wrap up.
Hi, my name is Gina DeAngelis. I'm a mom and raised my two kids in downtown San Anselmo. I've spent all my disposable income at Good Earth, so I hope you consider me a honorary resident of Fairfax. I am a lawyer. I have worked for the state of California for 20 years as a lawyer and administrative law judge. I very much appreciate your time as I also hold hearings like this. I wanted to address the ceasefire resolution and your thought to agendize it. I urge you not to do it. I have a number of reasons, and I guess at this point in time, after seeing what has happened the last few months, especially on the college campuses, I think that we can all agree that is a very divisive issue. I do understand that you have language that you might want to put into a ceasefire resolution that isn't divisive, but the fact of the matter is, and again, I think we can all agree, nobody reads that. Everyone just hears ceasefire resolution, and it's extremely divisive. It can bring violence to people. It can bring harassment. It can bring people like me are scared to have mezuzes on their front door. We don't know what will happen, and it's scary. So that's really the first thing I wanted to point out. The second is that at this point of time, I think we can all agree that the president of our country, the Joint Chiefs of Staff, Austin of the military, our Secretary of State, Blinken, strongly support what Israel is doing right now and doesn't support a ceasefire resolution. I mean, that kind of concept. We're in a horrible situation and we're dealing with a terrorist organization that's governing a group of people. We, we can't, I urge Fairfax not to take a stand that's contrary to the United States government.
I need you to end your comments. Thank you very much.
I have one
No, thank you. Thank you. We have, we have many people wanting to comment. Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you very much.
Hi there. I first would like to thank Councilmember Ackerman for the sentiment that he just presented. This is a topic that is incredibly near and dear, and I wanted to show up in person and just be able to look at you and speak as a human being. First, I really appreciate the intent and the sentiment behind any kind of promotion of peace. I think I would hope that everyone here out in Zoom land, wherever, we all want peace. What's happening is when this issue is risen into the council, town council chambers, as we've seen numerous times in the last months, it has become a symbol for unleashing antisemitism. It's sad, but it's a fact. We're seeing it unleashed in terms of intimidation, harassment, violence towards the Jewish community. I know that's not your intent. I know that's not what you want. But that's what's happening. And I am imploring you, given what we are seeing, to please absolutely use your voice in some other forum outside of the town council chambers as this has just become a symbol for hatred towards me and my people. I am, we are scared. That's why you're seeing us. That's why you're hearing from us. It's not to be annoying. We are literally feeling like we are in survival mode right now and are doing everything to protect ourselves and our families. We want peace, but please don't put out something that is going to be at the expense of an entire community where we are already in a lot of pain and fear. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I think the last two speakers certainly brought forth a good point. Bruce, thank you very much for asking us not to be agendized. I agree with the prior speakers that this has become a very, very divisive issue. It's trampling on our right to speak, assembly and everything else in the name of hate. I also agree that it's been extremely antisemitic. And my own personal view is because of jealousy. My opinion, and I'll restrict it to my opinion, is if you look at all groups of people in the entirety of the world, I don't really believe there's any group of people outside of the Jewish community that have brought forth as many opportunities in the sciences and maths, the humanities, the simple arts and music. And so I really see this as jealousy. I think they have been truly disadvantaged and picked upon for many times. And I do agree that putting forth the proclamation for somebody who was the aggressor and has not given back hostages improperly taken, I disagree with that. So I would appreciate if this council would either say nothing or stand up for what's right. If somebody goes in your home and takes your child aggressively, I don't think you're going to want to stop and tell you, get your child back. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers in the room? Seeing none, could we go to Zoom, please?
There are seven speakers with raised hands. The first speaker is Holly, followed by Diana. Holly, you are unmuted.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you so much, Councilmember Ackerman, for your comments. They were very, very amazing. You know, I want to let you know that I've spoken to most, to every single one of you. And we, we really, our, our community really is requesting strongly that you not put this item on the agenda. We have seen in all other communities, it's linked to divisiveness and, and residents feeling unwelcome and unsafe. And I can let you know that, you know, I've actually been, been to Israel. I've actually been to the West Bank. I have walked through the streets of Ramallah. I have met with leaders in Israel. I have met with the Palestinian Authority. And you know what everybody wants? They want peace. They don't want resolutions that divide our communities. There's 139 hostages still in, still in Gaza. And, you know, the, the prior speaker said, you know, basically, how, you know, why would you call for a ceasefire at a time when there's hostages that were taken? You know, we, we've seen atrocities on, on, in October 7th that we've never seen in our, in our lifetime. We've also seen a huge rise in antisemitism and Islamophobia. And these resolutions have brought so much antisemitism, so much violence, and so much making residents and people in our community feel so unwelcome that I would really ask you, please, don't create a forum for hate speech at the town council. Please don't. And we really are asking that you consider our community and that you really do not bring this resolution.
Oh, thank you, Holly.
The next speaker is Diana, followed by Esther. Diana, you are unmuted.
Hello?
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 Yes, we can hear you.
Hi. Hi, this is Diana again. I am your community member, and again, the granddaughter of Holocaust survivors. I implore you not to agendize a resolution about the Israel-Hamas conflict. It has been reported that in other communities where these resolutions have passed, people have taken it as an invitation to harass members of the Jewish community. Please, please, we don't want to hide our stars of David and our beloved community of Fairfax. These resolutions have only brought hostile environments. Can we please focus? I think focus should be placed on local issues and building a stronger and more united community more than, instead of a divisive issue that's going to divide the community. We all want peace, but we all want to feel safe. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Esther, followed by a member calling from an iPhone. Esther, you are unmuted.
I think we may have to go on to the next one.
I'm sorry, I didn't see the unmute button. May I begin?
Yeah, go ahead.
A resolution about Gaza, Israel, Palestinians, or Arabs would have the city taking a position on foreign affairs and foreign relations, which is in excess of its authority and violates federal law, including the dormant foreign affairs doctrine. Jewish presence in Zion, the land of Israel, and the existence of the state of Israel is a core Jewish religious matter. The murder of Jews is an Islamist purpose. In adopting any resolution about the conflict between Israel and its jihadist enemies or anyone else, the city would be discriminating against or promoting one religion over another. It would also be engaging in discrimination on the basis of religion, national origin, race, ethnicity, or creed. All of these are prohibited to the city. A resolution expressing a position on the war presently going on is outside the scope of each of your duties, and it is not what you were elected to do. It also shows that the city would be discriminating unlawfully and immorally by focusing on the conflict in which the only democracy and free society in the Middle East is defending itself from the forces of evil. Hamas is bala and the Iranian regime intent on the genocide of all Jewish people everywhere so as to conquer the tiny state of Israel. Such a resolution would be a most un-American act on the city's part and would undermine this country and the safety of your residents. To protect Fairfax residents, you should not agendize such a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is a caller from an iPhone, followed by Adam. The iPhone is unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
What strikes me, listening to my fellow Jews who have chosen Zionism speak, is how much money has been poured into propaganda to make them believe the settler colonial project would ever protect us. Look around you in the US. White supremacists are in every single position of power, especially the police. Google LASD gangs and the Vallejo badge vendors, if you don't believe me. Marin is a son downtown. We are not a democracy, and neither is so-called Israel. October 7th did not happen the way they've shown you on the news. Palestine is like if you stole someone's house, locked them in the basement, and then called them terrorists when they tried to break out. I hear my fellow Jews talking about antisemitism, but what about the racism against Black and Arab people? Zionism causes fear in non-white people, Arab people and their children especially. There have been no hate crimes against Zionists, except the ones that they've made up in their persecution complex, brainwashed brains. The hostages are being massacred by Netanyahu, too. You should want a ceasefire so you can get at least one back alive.
Okay, she's disparaging people of other races and other religions. I'm going to cut you off.
The next speaker is Adam, followed by Lori. Adam, you are unmuted.
Hi, thank you. And thanks for cutting off that speaker. That was very painful to hear. Please don't entertain any divisive ceasefire resolutions. It's beyond the purview of city governments to wade into foreign policy, and as a previous speaker mentioned, may violate federal law. There's been a staggering increase in antisemitism, which includes anti-Zionism, by the way, which has touched every Jew in the Bay Area across the US and the world, except for the Aziz Jews, like the one who just spoke. There was a ceasefire on October 6th, which was broken on October 7th by Hamas, a US-designated terrorist organization for their heinous, vile acts, rapes, mutilations, murders, and burning of over 1,200 civilians, which included folks from the United States, Thailand, and other nations. They took over 200 hostages and continue to hold over 100 in their terrorist tunnels. Israel, the US's strongest ally in the Middle East, is now waging a just war, attempting to release its hostages and defeat Hamas. Ceasefire? Hands off Rafa? College students and Hamas supporters alike have been shouting this for months. Why? Hamas is embedded in Rafa. It is their last stronghold. It's most likely where the remaining hostages are being held. Telling Israel to keep their hands off Rafa and to ceasefire is nothing more than a cudgel that supports Hamas. You want to make a foreign policy resolution, which you shouldn't, call for Hamas's unconditional surrender. People calling for ceasefire are simultaneously calling to globalize the Intifada, which is a call for the annihilation of Jews. This is such a clear hypocrisy. According to Israel, 14,000 Hamas terrorists have been killed. According to the UN, there may also be another 10,000 civilians who have died in this war or since this war. Shame on Hamas for using their civilians as human shields. Shame on Hamas for pilfering food and selling it to Gazans at a 10x markup. Shame on Hamas for their daily war crimes of shooting 15,000 rockets at Israel's civilian population.
You need to wrap up.
Each rocket a war crime.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Lori, followed by Cindy. Lori, you are unmuted.
Let's go on to Cindy.
Cindy, you are unmuted.
Hi, this is Cindy Ross again. As I mentioned before, I'm a longtime Fairfax resident. I'm a little bit taken aback that this came up this late in the special meeting. I wasn't prepared for that. But I do want to thank Councilmember Ackerman, you know, for saying something and for asking the council to please just table this once and for all. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know if you can hear. My dog is barking. You know, as other speakers have said, not only is this really none of your business, you know, it's not going to do anything except divide the community even more if you take a stand about a ceasefire. I mean, all normal people want peace. This war is horrendous. But you're not going to do anything except inflame antisemitism. And as other people have said before me, anti-Zionism is a very, very insidious, very nasty form of antisemitism. It's actually a form of Islamism in terms of trying to impose another religion and to kind of, you know, deconstruct Judaism so that it fits into an Islamist agenda that essentially is calling for, you know, deconstructing Israel, deconstructing Judaism, and attacking the West in general. And I just implore you, take this off your agenda once and for all. All you're going to do is promote more divisiveness, more antisemitic hate, and you're going to shoot yourselves in the foot because this is just something that is just, you know, it has nothing to do, you're not going to solve.
Thank you, Cindy. Your time is up. Thank you. Are there more speakers on Zoom?
We're going to try Lori again, and then Ava is our last speaker.
Okay.
Lori, you are unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is Lori. I'm a mom, and I'm a teacher. And we are all in pain for the loss of innocent life in Israel and Gaza. But a ceasefire resolution won't make it better. It will only make it worse. Don't take my word for it. Here's Mayor London Breed of San Francisco, quote, "Since the Board of Supervisors introduced their ceasefire resolution, our city has been angrier, more divided, and less safe. This exercise was never about bringing people together. It was about choosing a side." And here's Foster City Vice Mayor Jimenez on their proposed ceasefire resolution, quote, "What resulted is a tear in the fabric of our community." And here's a quote from Santa Cruz Sentinel about their ceasefire resolution, quote, "The proponents of the defeated resolution cursed members of the council. Some threw things at them, and windows were broken. Members of the council and the mayor received death threats," end quote. Why are ceasefire resolutions always accompanied by hate and antisemitism? I don't know. But this tells me that there's something more to this. It's not as simple as expressing pain about the deaths of innocent civilians. We don't need this kind of hate in Fairfax. Thank you for not agendizing this resolution. We're trusting you to stay focused on the needs of Fairfax, to stay on the right side of history, and to keep our city together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker and last speaker is Ava. Ava, you are unmuted.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
This is Ava Crissanti. And I'd like to point out, I noticed that two speakers were allowed to denigrate Muslims and Islam, and they were not cut off. But when a young Jewish woman called in and criticized her fellow Jews, she was cut off. I think this is part of a pattern of how the town council, including mayor, and including Mr. Ackerman, have bludgeoned the discussion. I'd also like to point out that none of the speakers who've spoken against any ceasefire resolution have mentioned that the ICC had to issue an arrest warrant for Benjamin Netanyahu and one of the members of his cabinet. Why did they have to do that? Mr. Khan was specifically chosen by, he was approved by the US, the UK, and Israel, because it was assumed he would never, he would never indict or charge anyone on our team. And in fact, the genocide of Palestinians in Gaza is so extreme that he had little choice but to do so. And this is on the heels of new revelations that Mossad was threatening the investigator from the, I think, the South African investigator. It is, what is happening right now is a genocide, but it is also turning the entire global South against the United States. This is really, really dangerous.
Thank you, Eva. Your time is up. Thank you. You can't speak twice. You've already spoken. I'm sorry. No, you cannot speak twice. You've already spoken. Okay. Are there any other speakers on Zoom? Bringing it back to the council, this is not agendized. Thank you, Councilmember Ackerman, for bringing this. Folks who are bringing the potential proclamation, the subcommittee, I'm sure has heard these comments, as well as many of the email comments we've gotten.
So I'm sorry that that took so long. We were all expecting that we were going to get out. But that was difficult, and it would be much more difficult if it were agendized and if we had a room full of people with all that range of opinions on it and so much anger. So I just don't see an upside to it. I don't see that it's going to change what's going on in Israel and Gaza, nor is it going to change the US. I think if individuals such as myself wanted to express our opinions and write a letter to our president, we would probably have more effect that way without dividing our community.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Councilmember Ackerman. I know that took a lot of bravery to do that. And now we're on to Town Manager's report. And even though it's late, I think there's some items that you would like to report on, such as the work that's going to go on tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll be quick. There was a PG&E project at Tamil Pious and Berry Trail, and a grinder truck was overturned. And so that actually occurred on Friday, and it's a tricky operation to remove that grinder truck, which is now on its side. And so work will begin approximately 6:00 AM tomorrow to remove that grinder truck and do a full inspection of the road and retaining wall underneath it. So we expect that we'll be able to, or PG&E will be able to remove that truck tomorrow, and then the repair process can begin. So it will take some time. Really appreciate the residents' patience there because there's some heavy traffic control. We did also publicize the traffic control in our town newsletter that went out today. Thank you, Christine, for getting that out among all the other things that were happening today. So that, I will keep you updated as we learn more there. But that is happening. And then we also mentioned there's work being done by the county on some of the upper Bollinas Road repairs. So people can also expect delays in the upper portion of Bollinas Road. So just, everyone, please be aware of that. And the good news in both of those areas is that electricity, water, sewer are all operating at this time and have been uninterrupted. So that's good news. And then I wanted to remind everyone for the June 5th meeting, which is just one week from today, we will have the survey results on, you know, a presentation again on that. So if anyone missed that, when we did that as part of our special meeting earlier in May, there's an opportunity next week.
Okay. Did you have a quick question?
Quick question. Thank you for that. We're starting to see all these signs from Ross Valley Sanitary District about their forthcoming work and an elongated timeline and maybe some unpredictability about when those disruptions might occur. Not sure if you or Public Works Director Umbertus have any information on that at this time, or, you know, all of the details. But I just wanted to recommend that we try to get some stuff up on the website because I'm sure people see those big signs and might want to look a little bit further at something in the newsletter when it's appropriate, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, will do.
Thank you. And with that, we're adjourned. And we're not making comments. Make it very fast, please.
The fact that we're having our town festival and people use the adjacent communities to park their cars as well as walking back and forth, I think this is not the time to allow the sewer district to have any open trenches or outside equipment in any of the parking areas. And I think that we should really be on top of them, knowing what they're doing, at what times, and ensure, maybe even by Wednesday of next week, that any and all trenches are properly plated, closed, no loose gravel, no loose sand. We don't need the liability that we'd still harbor should something fail with their work. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure Town Manager will look into that. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
With that, we're adjourned. Same time next week. Thank you. With that, we're adjourned. Same time next, next week. Thank you.